This is fun.
Take the listener right.
We good?
Okay, welcome. It is November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. We are at the regularly scheduled board work session. We'll have a call the order. Started off next with the flag pledge.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. I see we have six board members here and Christine is joining us on Zoom, so everybody's present. And she's back. And we have some of the goodest, right? We have Darrell Johnson, Bruce Martin, Tiffany Rush, and John Davis. Welcome. All right, we're ready for two, item two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
You're not really taking action.
So let's just roll ahead. Okay. Item three, non-discrimination committee update. Didn't know if one of the, one of the three members that are on that here had any updates perhaps from the date of the second meeting.
Yeah, so our first meeting was Monday, November eighth. We had some progress on that, had some brainstorming ideas and came with a bunch of ideas. We, we were short three people. Through various reasons. So we, I don't know yet if they've been caught up speed on anything. Mary's tried to contact Kathleen to get update on whether they've been contacted and, and updated for that information. Our next meeting is potentially maybe Monday, November twenty-ninth. It's a, a date that's been put out there from now. We have yet to actually schedule the date. Either of the two of you have anything else?
It was, it was really a good meeting and, it was interesting and Harris did a really good job.
She texted me today. She said, November twenty-ninth, they're just looking at the space of where, I wonder if she's, she was asking about a bigger room, but I'm guessing all champions as well.
Yeah, I can give them some options. They want something bigger than this and this is the biggest we have in this building. So you might even be looking at their, you know, the EST building.
Did you have one?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, and that meeting can be held. Our board meetings have to be held in, that meeting can be held.
Nothing Tuesday, isn't it?
It is technically Tuesday. It's kind of on that edge of board.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Okay, is that everything on non-discrimination committee update? You good? Okay, item four, November twelfth, school closure. And that revolved around essentially not having to the, teachers calling in sick for personal days, didn't have enough personnel to run the schools. So, we wanted, you know, I wanted to see us in school the twelfth, but it turned out we didn't have enough personnel to run that school. So it made it as a agenda item so that we could talk about maybe some root causes and maybe some, maybe some possible solutions going forward. I think Kevin, you might, you had some feedback sessions with the teachers.
Yeah, that, I mean, this, this started, this started from a conversation a few weeks ago, just around some stress behavior, student behavior. That was, that's sort of rising. John can talk a little bit about it, you know, John and Darrell. And what can we do? And it wasn't really that they were asking for days, that it didn't really start that way. It was, what can we do? Our teachers are asking for some support and help. What can we do? And we personally got all of our administrative team, and representatives from all the schools together to talk about what, what's going on, how, how can we help you? And a lot of what came out of that meeting, yeah, other people can weigh in, was, hey, we need more time to, to, to mate and plan. Our kids are destroying our classrooms. We need to figure out, you know, what, how do we change that? So where, and we're, we don't have time to do it at the end of day, or we're just burned out at the end of day. And we need professional development. How do you de-escalate some kids? How can we help support them? Maybe there's some different training things that came out of that. And then it was, the, the conversation shifted again towards, well, how do we, how do we find the time to do that? At the same time, our teachers are teaching at the middle school and high school are teaching other preps, so we don't have subs. And so every day, these guys are asking staff, hey, we have a teacher that's out, we have six periods to cover, who wants to take their prep and teach the class? And then they scramble and put that together. And if they don't get enough, will we hold their teaching classes? Or other people are removed, counselors are teaching classes, they have a name of students as teaching classes. So there's that piece of stress of teaching and not having preparation time that sort of has, is a piece of this. Whether it led up to the November twelfth, there was lots of other factors. I would say John, John probably is, I, I, I didn't really point out one school. But the middle school, one, I think there's a sickness going through the middle school, not just, not just COVID. Like a bad cold, flu-ish thing going through his school specifically impacting staff. That, again, John can talk about, was sort of on the edge of being able to operate safely. And you, I don't know, do you want to talk just briefly about that? I know some of the board members heard a bit of that last week.
Sure. So the, the main thing that happens is we're, we've been short-staffed from the standpoint of our educational assistance. And when they're gone, we have zero replacements. And when I say zero, we've had one employee work for us this year as a classified employee. And as a secretary for two weeks while someone was out, and then she's been working in this bedroom occasionally, but that's it. She's it. So all of our positions go unfilled. So when we have multiple people out, those are the people that cover our duties, they cover a lot of our difficult children in our special education classes. And so it, it just spins off from there. And as a result of that, we end up with more drama in hallways because nobody's there. Because teachers are at their door and there's four minutes and their kids are gone. Teachers have to go get a break or a drink or look at the bathroom. So when there's not anybody in the hall, then you get a little drama right there. And then of course that spins off to the next period or to, they're sent to the office, you know. So you just, you just, every period it just ratchets up a little because kids recognize when there's no one there. And as a result of some long-term sickness, we had PE classes that were having a different teacher every period, sometimes all day, or a different sub from Monday to Tuesday and a different sub on Wednesday because of the long-term, over two weeks absence of one of our teachers. We had a history teacher out, same thing, we're covering it as we can. But it just creates a little bit more drama. And in the middle school, you don't want drama. You, you, that just, it, it just explodes on. So as a result of lack of staff, it starts to grind on you. And we can all do a day, we can all do a couple of days, but when you're extended out two to three weeks in a row where you're just barely staff, it is too much. And when we saw the numbers on, on Thursday, how many we were missing and we hadn't even gotten to noon yet, we were already in trouble because we couldn't cover. And that was after, two and a half to three weeks of just surviving. So that's where we sat Thursday morning when I called Kevin. And it, we'll never know how many people would have called in sick or not because we had to make a decision. Because when you wait until five-thirty in the morning, it's already too late and buses are rolling. So it was a tough decision, but I think you have to look at the totality of where we were. We were struggling with staff. And we're, the two good things that came out of this, one is that we got a person that walked in the door that wants to be a teacher. And I jumped on that immediately. We've got his license from California going through TSBC and with all the help that we provided, I want him in our buildings every day. I mean, we, we could literally keep him busy just about every single day. And this person has kind of committed us to, hey, you helped sponsor me and you've got me the rest of the year. So, and these teachers, that we only have three or four that we have been able to get into the middle school. They don't want to come to the middle school from the standpoint of wearing a mask all day. They don't want to, the, there's so many, you can work as much as you want. You can work and they don't want to work that much. So we have some that'll say, okay, I'll work Tuesday and maybe Friday. So if we hit those two days, we've got that person maybe, but Bannon got them. Or you said I'm saying, so we got very few people to pull from. So one or two more makes a huge difference. Our classified staff though, we have, if you're gone, there's nobody. When we got five out of our eight gone, that's not good. So it's kind of a little quick synopsis of it that we talked about with three of us for over an hour. So.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't take that decision lightly. And then I call, started with John calling me. So I just, that, again, that just is the facts. I didn't, I had to get it out and publicizing that at a time, but that was sort of the starting point. But I went from there, calling every single other administrator in our district to try to find out, what's your situation? Where are we at? How do you feel about this? And everyone else was sort of, they kind of thought, well, I think we can run. If I, I think one of them was, you know, if, as long as nobody else calls in sick, we'll be fine. But again, then that's it, you know, ten or eleven in the morning on, on Thursday, and we really don't know. And so it was one of those, I, I felt like there was no, there was no good outcome of this. If we left, I felt like we were probably jeopardizing some safety things. I also want to make sure that this is not something, I think, I know part of us, us conversation today, that we don't want this to happen on a regular basis. I don't want this to happen again. Part of this is, you saw when I put my note out, I didn't tell our staff what we're doing with this day. So emergency closure, no one worked. For the most part, we typically treat this like a snow day. We tack it on someplace. We put it on the end of the year, or we, we have options. And so right now, we haven't made that decision. That certainly can be part of this conversation about what do you want to do with that.
The board makes the decision of what to do with that or?
They can. I think if we're going to not, for the most part, we usually just, if, if typical, we would add it on the end of the year or take a different day and we just, we just run that way. If we're going to not have that day, I think that's where we, I would want our board to.
Can we address the shortage of staff somehow? I mean, how many are we short? Like, what's the ideal number?
So let me give you a, a little bit of information on that as far as what our goal was. We posted a couple of jobs about, about two and a half weeks ago, hoping to get some help during the middle part of the day, which is our academic support and our recess duties. And we have one applicant. And unfortunately, I'd be pulling it from another school in our district. So that's not helping us.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
And so just recently, I got two more. And so over two weeks, we have one from an internal and two external that just came in. And that, that's great. I mean, that's a good start, but that's, we're not just flooded with applicants.
Right. So what do you think that the issue is? Like, how many teachers are we, how many teachers, how many classified are we short? And, and what, what's the, the reluctance to fill, the reluctance to have that filled by the people? I mean, not us, but what's keeping them?
A couple of things in there, Julie goes into it. Our sub pool used to be retired teachers.
Right.
And COVID, of course, has limited that. Beginning of this year, when we looked at the sub list, it went from a, a pretty robust sub list down to just a handful of teachers.
Why was that though?
They don't want to be in because of fear of the catching COVID because they come in. That was the excuse that most often came out as we talked about it. And some of them don't need to.
Anything about the mandates of any kind? It was fear of the, the.
There's, there's, there's a lot of different reasons why people are short-staffed. I mean, all.
Oh, I get it. I'm just wondering if it's been addressed and talked about.
Well, I think, I think it's part of what we're doing here, but there's so many reasons why people don't want us sub. I mean, part, part of it's probably the, part of it's like because of COVID, part of it's probably because of, just, just the behavior issues of the kids coming back after being gone for a year. Part of it's because some people get more money by sitting at home.
Yeah, that's the kind of information that needs to be out there for the parents to understand. So like, because I'm thinking some of them are out there, sitting out there like, why is going on? And so for us to talk about this.
If we want something to address it, we've actually have some postings for temporary educational assistance hired through the end of the year. And we've been able to fill some of those. And we have more interviews going on. The end of this week, every building will have a couple of positions in it. The, at the elementary and middle school. I don't know what the high school's doing exactly on that one. I can't remember Darrell. But I know there's going to be some additional folks that will fill in those positions that, that are those key positions we need to have. We're also looking at filling some of those teacher positions in some variety of ways. Folks with four-year degrees and some emergency licensure of people that are going back to school to become teachers. And I think that pool is going to expand. The other issue on some of these days is the fact that our contract allows for personal days for teachers in there. And it's pretty specific on what we can do and what we can't do. If they request it ahead of time and they get a sub for those personal days, then we pretty much have to honor those personal days. And so if you look at the twelfth, I'm sure there were some personal days on it that were put in clear back in September or October. And they had subs for them, but that also depletes the pool that we can pull from for those people that are sick on those days. So it's kind of this perfect storm that comes up that you go through too.
And I think that, so that was the important information that I think that parents needed to know. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So if we went back three years ago, pre-COVID days, in terms of the pool we had, was, did, was this, what's the difference in terms of the people that were available? Did this happen three, four years?
No, I've never had a sub in fifteen years until this year.
There were days that we couldn't fill all the, the positions necessarily through the sub pool, but they were few and far between, I would say.
I think the high school has a smaller probability of positions than the other schools. Doesn't mean we don't have it, but our kids tend to be a little more self-regulated. So people come and it's not quite as intimidating. Three years ago, we probably had three times the available subs to pull from than we have now. And there's a number of reasons we've talked about the fact that, you know, there are places that pay a little more than, than we pay now that are readily accessible. There's the, the COVID issues going on. We, I have had some people tell me they're not going to sub because they're not going to, they're not interested in, in all the mandates. They don't want to be, part of that. That, that's part of the world we live in too. One of the, I think, challenges we have moving forward though, is going to be, how can we make a long-term change? And I think we've got to grow our own and invest in our EAs that we have. And I know it coaches on our classified staff. We've got EAs that want to be teachers. I think we really need to open the doors a little more, maybe even wider than we're opening right now. To allow them to get in and sub. And, and that will help us on the certified side. I know it coaches on the classified side. But it gives them that experience to find out, is this where I want to be? Because the only way we're going to get people is if we build our own feeding system here in North Bend in Tuesday.
And we've done some creative things to bring subs in. We've gone to subs and said, we would like you to sub. And we're going to put you on the list in several buildings and said, you're here, we don't know if we're going to have somebody sick or not, but we want you to commit to us. And I think at the elementary level, there, each of the elementary buildings have two people coming in to do that. And I think almost every day they've been used for that. If they're not used for that, they're used for bringing the, somebody up to do some meetings, some other things there. But it's being preemptive in that and making sure you have as many people on board as you can. But we've taken some steps to do that and it, it's getting a little bit better. It is. But there's going to be these days that come in, especially when you have personal days coupled with some of the other things in there that it's going to be difficult to fill all those spots.
So are we, technically, are we short any certified or classified staff that are supposed to be, are we short any teachers? Like, do we have any positions that must be built? That we're just running without because we're having substitutes trying to come in or each other's trading places with each other? Or are we short any actual?
Permanent positions.
Permanent positions for classified or certified?
Classified, I think we're short a couple of positions currently, but we're going to fill those. I believe this week we have, I think there's five or six people on the interview pool that we're going to interview for that. I think we'll be able to fill those. We have a couple of resignations that are pending potentially out there.
For permanent positions?
Permanent positions.
And do you have any applicants for the, well, I heard you have one.
Yeah, and I think they're so new that, that it's going to take a little bit of time for those to get through that. And we're hoping some will, one of them will reconsider as we go through as well. So. We had a long-term PE position that has yet to be built since the beginning of the year. And that was like a, again, it's not full-time, all year, which began at that, we tend, we didn't post it that way. We basically need it for half, you know, half the school year. And we didn't get anyone to take that job. And so we've been sort of scrambling. So that's a, that's a person that was one of our coaches who could be doing, should be doing other things. Has been pretty much teaching PE the entire year so far. And our, our learning coaches will fill in. And that's kind of nice to have them because they go out to the buildings and fill in as well. So we've got people that know our system as well going in there. So I think we've got some things in place. It's just going to take some time. Teaching side of things, we've been sort of surviving mostly. But again, the people at the middle school and secondary are doing these extra periods and to try to help. It's the classified, I think, is where we've seen when people are taking days and there's a little bit more, you know, I need a mental health day, boom, sick day. And, and we don't, we have rules around us that we can't really ask.
None of those automatically needed to be granted at the mental health days because automatically.
It's a sick day. Yeah, we don't, I will just say, it's like, it just seems that there is a, these guys know, there's a pattern of, of, of you are folks that tend to do that or use those days in that manner. There's other people that never use them. So it's a mix, a mixed bag, but we kind of know who they are. And in many ways, if they can't show up and be fully present with kids and be, be positive, they create more problems than usually it's worth. So in many ways, it's like, go take your personal wellness day and, and hopefully you'll come back tomorrow positive and can work with kids because that's what we need from you. It's a challenge.
A couple of things we did over the last several years in terms of the certified and the classified contracts is offered to purchase their personal leave if they chose not to use it. And it actually is cheaper than hiring a substitute for the day. So it's actually a win for the district as well. So that helps reduce the amount of substitutes we would need. And then the other piece, I think, I think we lost some substitutes during COVID because during that window when all the kids were home, we had no need for a substitute. I think for some folks, they found other things to do in terms of employment and they haven't come back. But we do, we do have some substitutes that have come back to us. Some do have like an exception. So we have been as accommodating as we possibly can, getting back as many as we possibly can.
Thank you. Sorry for all the questions. I appreciate that.
Let me, let me, I like kind of the last thing is to, this is, on, on the December ninth agenda will be a conversation from a group of our, both of our unions, our teachers and certified, and I think some of our administrative staff to talk about a way for us to maybe, I don't know, support the challenges. You, you read, every day you open a paper, I think you're, you're hearing our kids and staff struggling with behavior and the stress of being a teacher. I think it's, again, whether it's adding masks and shortages and it just all of it together has been a lot on folks. And so this was a way out of when we met with teachers to say, all right, let's find some days. And so this shows a second and third trimester can revise calendar. It moves early dismissal from Wednesday to Friday. So as one kind of, let's, let's change that time. And this proposal has us extending that by an hour. So we'd go from an hour dismissal to a two-hour dismissal, again, to provide sort of each week more time for them to do some planning, preparation, connection, whatever that need, needs to happen. The yellow days would be scheduled workdays for staff. And so these align to Cus Bay. So because Cus Bay does a, a semester schedule and this, these five days are aligned to them in terms of days off that they have or workdays that, that align with Cus Bay. Again, it's one of those things that I, again, I'm not sure it's, it's a trade-off of quality days versus more days. One of the things I, and I've spoken to, to Jim a little bit closer was, you know, once we get to June fifteenth, you know, we also know that the school year really for a lot of our kids can't end then. That we need them coming to summer school and I need staff who are committed and engaged who will come and teach some school. And I worry that if, if we sort of continue the stress level at a really high level, that they'll just come like, yeah, I'm, June fifteenth, I'm done. I need a break. Even though our kids need, need that to continue. Is that, will that have a piece to this? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just worried that if we don't do something to let a little air out of the balloon for our, our staff, that we also in the summer, when I, we don't want to see from June fifteenth to September ninth with no, no connection with our, our teachers, our instructional assistants, our advent team, adults who are connecting with them, getting them inspired to read, do science, do other things. So I, I think there's a part of this that, that is in that narrative as well. So this is just a proposal. You're going to hear some teachers and, and folks come next in December to talk about this and what they need. I don't know if this is the, the perfect solution. So I don't, I'm not trying to phrase it that way.
What might be the benefit of us aligning with Cus Bay? I mean, I, I, not that it matters, I don't know. I just think it's, what would benefit us to align with Cus Bay's schedule?
Yeah, so some of it is, is, is sort of these, we have kids, staff, teachers, kind of like across both, both systems. So when there's a.
Benefits.
Friday off. Well, they'll take personal days, sick days. So again, there's sort of that alignment can help in terms of childcare. Cus Bay already has days. And so if there's already childcare aligned, then we have more opportunities for kids to provide care when there's a bigger pool of kids that need that.
I can speak just from the high school level because we have so many subject areas where there are very few teachers. It's hard for them to have a learning community just in our school. I mean, we've got one choir, two band teachers. When, when we have the opportunity to combine with, with other local schools and Cus Bay is the one that's large enough to have similar programs. Then our professional learning community grows so that they're able to share more ideas and, and have more people contribute to their professional development. We really feel that when our CTE team gets together and that ends up being sponsored out of SWOT on a pretty regular basis. And so if we can have that happen in other content areas also, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
Kevin, how did, I know we talked briefly, there's some state minimum instruction hours.
Yeah, I, I haven't done the calculation on the impact of this. I can just probably, I don't really need to do the formal calculations to know. This will most likely drop us below the required hours. I know a hundred percent it'll drop us below for high school. Pretty sure it's going to drop us below for middle school. Elementary, it's iffy, but I would, I would guess it will by a little bit. So that's under Division twenty-two. We just reported on that, you know, long ago. Ultimately, there is, there's not really a penalty to that. There is a reporting that will happen next year around. We would report to the state that we're out of compliance in this year. What the state asks for is give us a plan and basically assurance that you're going to get back in alignment with those standards. So that's really what they'd be asking us to do. So is this a short-term solution to, to deal with this in the pandemic and everything else versus are you changing this permanently? And you want the state to, we can request a waiver to the state. I'm guessing they would probably deny that on long-term.
Um, I actually have a little bit of a concern. Can we ask Cus Bay, how long have they been doing this? Can we ask them what their stats are as far as two-hour early release on Friday? It's basically one period after lunch. So like, they're skirting, you know?
I don't think they are doing, I don't think the early dismissal is necessarily two hours. I don't, I don't know if that's true. Is it two hours for them? I don't know the answer.
I just feel like Friday's gift day every week, you know?
I, I would say from a, from a parent, from a parent-kid view, this is usually, the Fridays is usually a little better in terms of them accepting this. For my staff, PLC, like learning time, it's not the best. If it's two hours, I've been, in Corvallis, we had it on Fridays. They get used to it. They do use their time for that planning and preparation, at least part of that. On the hour on a Friday, so instead of getting out at two-thirty and it's one-thirty, I think it becomes a little more iffy on, are they staying around very long on the Friday beyond? They'll do their PLC time. We know that they get together in their groups. I'm not sure if the Fridays, the quality probably drops a little bit because they're tired. And I'm not sure that's much different.
Kids, I'm talking about kids.
Well, kids, kids, kids like, I mean, again, kids and families typically like it better on Friday versus Wednesday.
Just like, that's what I mean. Like, it's, I feel like it, it could possibly enable Friday gift day.
Just don't even show up on Friday?
Yeah.
I got you. That is, I suppose that is possible, that we could see an increase in absences on Fridays.
Yeah.
So what, I got to speak to one of the benefits for the high school though, is we, we have a lot of athletes who travel. You know, Friday is a travel day. That's Monday for.
They're skipping school anyway.
Well, I think it's not skipping. I mean, because we actually, we have promos on the bus, isn't it? Well, I think it's not skipped, I mean, because we actually, we have homework on the bus, isn't it? So they can, I mean, alright. You would be surprised, they've really done well, because the coaches are teachers and have really done on them. But this would take a lot of the travel days outs. It takes a.
It would support that, I mean, you're missing less class time.
Less of an impact of in-class time, so.
Then on top of that, the subs needed for those coaches when they're gone typically, it's not the need that you have. Thinking that Fridays are typically the day they would see the most subs, and.
They don't want a sub on Fridays, so that's, yeah.
In, in this particular model, other schools have been doing it for a while now.
Right, yeah, I think KUSBAY has been doing a Friday early dismissal, I think, for as long as I, I know, I, they chose to that day. Usually if you do a survey on, on early dismissal, parents want Fridays, staff doesn't, partly because of what you said, it's not as quality. Yeah.
Yeah, ones are for children.
Yeah, I think from a parent perspective, it's typically, from a staff, I'm not.
I guess I've never had an issue with it.
It's a sort of depends, I think, on what's going on with kids and families. So I don't, we don't need to, again, you'll hear more about this, I'm, I, this was sort of a little preview of, it, it fits into this November twelfth period, it's, it's one of those, that's, it wasn't related necessarily, but it just sort of goes into the, the stress and what we're trying to find a way to, to, to help support this. And you're probably, again, there's multiple articles just in the last couple of days around districts across the state, considering the same kinds of things. Cause I think we're all, this isn't a, this isn't a problem isolated to North Bend, I'm for sure.
And you probably saw the, the Portland Middle School, it's literally going virtual for a couple of weeks, just to kind of.
Because of all the flights.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah. I, we're not having that.
I just, I just had a question, if I could, and so, are we done with that part? Cause I wanted to go back real quick, but, sorry, I'm trying to.
It's, it's, it's a little free-for-all.
Okay.
Sweet, a free-for-all right there?
Go ahead, go ahead. Um, I was just gonna ask, uh, when it comes to, to trying to get subs, trying to get teachers and everything else in. I mean, cause I, I think, John, I think you were the one who said, you know, maybe trying something new, something different. It might have been, um, like you, Darryl, but, uh, but have we tried to just like, almost reach out and cold call? Basically, the, the people who've been on the list in the last five years, just say, hey, where, where are you at? We need people, and then also even, maybe at some point doing the, I mean, we get that automated, you know, message thing, uh, you know, maybe just saying, hey, you know, we're, obviously in a more professional way than, hey, we need help, but, um, but, but if, you know, if you have any interest in, in substituting or, or, you know, assisting, you know, please, please contact so-and-so. I, I don't know if we, have we tried anything like that?
We, we personally have at the middle school, we've called every single person on the list, number one. And then number two, gone back and looked at people who aren't on there now and kind of just to reach out to them. And, uh, we generated one, which was better than that.
Yeah.
But yeah, that maybe, maybe fifty, sixty calls.
Fifty or sixty calls, okay. And our sub pool goes through, for the most part, prior to this year, it's been through the ESV. And so the ESV has also been reaching out to every single one of them to try to get them committed. Cause that, we have our district that, we have a little bit more staffing and, and these guys do it, John is staff, and they're, they just do a much outreach because they need the subs. The ESV for our smaller, for hours in KUSBAY, Kokil, they, they're doing a collective trying to get subs. And they basically, we call them, they have several people.
So do we, do we pay the same as KUSBAY?
Sub is a standard rate statewide.
Do they have a, do they have a food store, are they in the same boat?
Everyone's in the same boat, they're struggling too.
Yeah, you know, Spencer, to add, add a little bit to that, we have advertised in the shopper, it's been, uh, on our Facebook pages and just a Facebook advertisement that they put out there as well. It's gone in the announcements, I, I know at the elementary and at the middle school, it's gone there. And bit, our pool that we have this week is a result of that. Uh, I think there's six people they're interviewing this week, and they, they have hired two additional people previous to that. Because we have been able to get some people to respond to that. I think it doesn't hurt too, when some of the federal money goes away, and some, uh, you know, you don't have quite as many opportunities, uh, to receive compensation for staying home, uh, so we're seeing a little more activity now.
We're being a little more creative, um, the gentleman that came in on Friday when we didn't have school, and I passed on to, he had some middle school experience, like seven or eight years in California, and he's just moved here. Something like, John, you need to get over here. So that was one that we typically would have passed that off to the ESV, go through your process, they do their thing, they do the background check, we're not, like, it's, we're just doing that in-house, like, we're just gonna take care of them ourselves.
They have a pulse, they're hired.
Well, and again, and we're like, we typically, because we, we pay money to the ESV to run a sub pool. We're, we're okay with them doing their sub pool, and we're gonna take a person, because we know, like, we'll put this guy to work every single day. So I don't need the ESV to have him go to KUSBAY or to go to Kokil. Uh, we need, we need good, strong people here, and so it's a, again, like, hopefully no one's watching this online.
I wanna add that, is we don't just take it, we, we bet them pretty well before we do that, and we do the reference checks, we go through that as well. So we're not just taking everybody that comes in, there's a, I would say you're gonna get fifty percent, you know, at times, depending upon their qualifications and, and, you know, their ability to, to work with kids at that point. So we wanna make sure we have the right folks in our, in our building, so we were pretty hard to ensure that.
In, in terms of, you guys were talking earlier in terms of, like, committing to subs, is there, somebody alluded, is there an opportunity just to commit to a couple of subs, say, look, we need, we need someone for the next two, we're gonna commit to two subs for two weeks, we don't have this.
We've done that and by the month, we're not even going two weeks, we want you through December.
Sure.
Through the break in December, and then we'll reevaluate where we are and, and what's happening with some of the things with the buildings. But we want you through the end of December, our Christmas break and, and that, that winter break in that time period. And then we're gonna reevaluate before that time period whether we want them to commit to us again, so we don't lose them somewhere else. We'd be willing to, like, our strong people, to basically put, to get, put them to work for the rest of the year. And we'll just have them on staff, we'll pay them, and, and we'll, cause one, we're gonna, we want folks to apply for these jobs once we come into the spring, we know we'll have open jobs, it just is inevitable. Um, so to have a pool of people that we know are strong, um, so we're committing to some long-term subs. Uh, whether we really need them, like, on a day-to-day basis or not. And a, a lot of them are saying, I don't wanna work all the time, but I'll work three days a week for you, or I'll work these. And it's, if we can balance that with somebody else on the other side, it works pretty well. So that we can meet their needs and keep them here, so we're working on that as well.
Yeah, that's a great, if, if you can provide them some schedule certainty that fits their, what they could do, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, good conversation, anything else on, uh, this before we move on?
Just one, just one final thing, and that is, we, we have had a sub that we're doing the same thing with, and we're actually working around his college schedule because he's finishing a degree. And, but the really, the cool thing about this is that he's in the building, and the kids recognize him and accept him when he walks in the door. And that is completely different than a sub coming that we've never seen for a month or two months, or never.
Sure.
And so that continuity just really helps, even though we're short-staffed, just that familiar face makes all of them seem normal.
Well, I guess I have a bit of a comment before we move on, and that's, that's behavior issues. Um, what's going on with that? And I mean, I'm kind of surprised at how much is allowed, and this is, you know, causing the teachers to be stressed. Um, can't they just be sent home? Or are there no parents there, or?
We have some very clear rules and regulations on sending kids home, um, so suspension, depending on what grade you are, and I don't have this, the policy in front of me. Um, but for our kids, grade five and below, it's pretty much violence is about the only thing that you can suspend, suspend a kid for. Um, so they actually have to do, and again, depending on, we would say that, um, but I can't remember exactly what the language in there, but some kind of violent act has to occur. At the secondary level, it has to be, um, there's a little bit more wiggle room to that, but kind of under that same, has to be pretty persistent, and it has to be pretty significant impact on school. So again, there's been laws that have been written that says, we know sending kids home doesn't really help change behavior. Um, and so, but again, it's created issues for schools, we also can't restrain and seclude them. So we can't grab them, and we can't, um, like, close the door and not let them leave. So there has been a shift over the last five to ten years around how we can control kids, how we can work with them, how we can discipline them. Um, so it's created, it has changed the dynamic, and not in a, I don't know, depending on how you wanna look at it, it's a more humane way. Um, we, we have, I can show you back in the day, some pictures of boxes that kids were shoved into that you would probably find pretty appalling, um, and that if your own kid was put in there. But that was a strategy that was accepted, um, we used to spank kids back in the day, like, I got swatted numerous times. Yes, you, a big surprise, Kevin was swatted. Middle school and high school, um, a few times. Um, it worked, it worked for me, but it's, again, we, we've shifted, like, we don't, we don't do that, and we can't do that. Um, we tell our teachers, like, you do not touch a kid, if you're, if you're mad and they're mad, discipline what, you do not touch them. Um, period, that, that's just, um, and it has to be pretty, a pretty egregious thing for us to put hands on a kid. And then they're required to do about a fourteen-page report, about four different meetings, and we report it to the state, so.
That's, that's understandable, but this is why we're in this vicious circle, and the teachers are about to pull their pair off, they don't wanna come to work and everything.
So we have responded by investing in more adult support. So then the shortage that we're having is typically these folks that are supporting behavior, one, they get burned out pretty quickly because it's hard, it's hard work. You need a lot of training, this pandemic has just escalated, you know, having a, a year where they didn't have as many rules, they didn't have this sort of structure, we're, now they're coming back into structure, they don't like it, but they kind of push back against it. It's more than we've typically seen, um, so it's a bigger problem than, I mean, this pandemic has created some of it, but it's been building over the last decade. And now that's a, that's a answer to that, babe, I know they're all nodding their heads, and it's, there's not easy solutions to this.
So back in the day, like, I'm sixty, when I was a teacher.
Yeah.
The kids, we respected the teachers, is that, is that respect gone? Is it present in seventy to eighty percent, and it's twenty-five that don't, or, you know? So is there anything we can do culturally to, to get that back?
I think that there are days that go better than others, and I think that as time goes on, and, and structure and routines are consistent. We're getting, um, you know, certain kids are starting to clearly stand out that they're not gonna comply. But that area of kids, that seventy percent, or whatever percent that is, is getting more solidly entrenched in a good routine. But it's the, it's the other percent that wears you out, because they constantly challenge every single thing you do. And it's might be that they actually agree, but they just challenge you anyway.
And I would say it's not, you know, it, it's a small percentage. And typically, it doesn't take too many of the big behaviors to change a whole field within a school. And I, I think our focus has been on, can we get those big behaviors under control? And it may be a reduced day for a while, we build up capacity in there, and a variety of different things, meeting their sensory needs and some of the other things that go on with them to cause, you know, them to misbehave. And it works very closely with parents to, to make a, a pact and, and make behavior plans to, to make those changes. And we're working on some of those things as we move forward. Add to that the fact that, you know, we, because we've been cohorting, they haven't been able to get into the lunchrooms the same way. They haven't been able to get out to recess the same way, um, that all adds to it, and I mean, your capacity to handle things when you don't have the same amount of free time and the same thing that you had before, to release that energy is quite different. Uh, we've now, I think, passed that tipping point, and they're now back in the lunchrooms, or soon will be in, in all the buildings. They're back in, uh, out to recess, mixing cohorts by grade level out there, with precautions in there. So I think we're gonna see some big changes come up as we round that corner. Uh, that, that's our goal anyways, we're trying lots of different things. Uh, we'll be seeing more and more normalcy within the, all the buildings here as we move forward. And I think that's gonna make, make a big difference in, in a lot of those behaviors.
I've gotta say, I think we have more kids that are respectful at North Bend High School than there were at the schools that I went to when I was a child. And I don't know that the kids in Alaska were any different than kids around the country. I think we've got a few dozen kids, there's maybe three or four percent of our kids that are struggling with respect, and we definitely feel it, maybe a little more extreme than some of it here. We have an amazing group of students, and I, I don't want to, I don't want anybody to think that, that North Bend kids are, are in general disrespectful. That's absolutely untrue. Our kids are amazing, ninety-five, ninety-six, even ninety-seven percent of them are incredibly respectful. And they'll come and talk to me, even when the adults we work with make a mistake, and, and you know what, adults do make mistakes. Sometimes, you're the ones that make a mistake and respect. And I've got kids that will come to me and very respectfully express a concern, which is phenomenal, gives me the opportunity to go to a teacher and help coach them. Our kids are great kids, overwhelmingly respectful, kids of integrity, and, and they wanna do well, they wanna succeed. And they wanna engage with adults, they wanna engage with them, they appreciate the staff that are working hard, and I just gotta say, they're good kids.
This is causing us to have a shift from, kind of from, I think, away from what you're talking about, which is, can we do something with this, with this group of kids that, uh, that, that forces some respect? It is, the, the typical traditional school structure does not work for the good kids. And that's, and we're seeing it earlier and earlier, and it's, we've been before, we weren't really seeing some of this until maybe middle school. We're seeing it a little younger, so we're seeing like, so how do we respond to the needs of our kids? And that's what I think the challenge of us, and all, kind of alt-ed, alternative educational programs that expand somewhere in elementary into middle and high school, that don't look like the traditional school. And that all is something that we all just have to sort of wrestle with and struggle with to figure out, what does that look like? Cause none of us got, have experienced that, but we know it's what needs to happen, because when our kids are really active, we have kids, if I can just get them out of the classroom and into the forest, they'll be fine. So how do we do that in a, in an effective way that also hits the academic outcomes that we want? Cause I'm saying, we don't want kids just out playing in the forest and then on the beach, it is like, that, if that's gonna happen, what are the academic outcomes that come with that? And, and expectations that come with that, and, and high achievement, and that's what we would expect in that environment. And that, that's where we're headed, is to address their needs, that's like, we get the, they're sending us a clear message, this isn't working for us.
And we know that COVID is, is probably impacted one of the biggest things, you know, for that, that's relationships. Relationships amongst kids, because they're not there for the same level, and amongst adults, and, and you've gotta build those relationships to have that respect from kids, you have to do that, it just doesn't come naturally, and if they're not there, it's hard to build it. And when they walk in, it takes time to do it, that's why we've looked at some of those territory education programs. And really focused on taking that time to build that, that care and community connection that, that we need to do. And, and it's gonna take some time to build those relations, to train some of those kids in systems that, that we want them to respond with and how to respond in situations, because some of those kids, our younger kids especially, have not seen school as we know it for almost two years, this is their first time back in, so it's gonna take a little bit of time.
And I, and, and to add to that, we know, we heard from adults within our schools during COVID, especially when they were at home, the disconnection they were feeling from their colleagues. And so I think that, that building the relationships and, or bringing those relationships back together has been an important one. And I would tell you that there's not a day, I, I don't think there's a day at district office, we're not hearing from staff, um, not just teachers, teachers and educational assistance secretaries, um, sharing concerns, frustrations. And like, then we're trying to problem solve, how can we help fix those things? So I don't think there's a single easy job, um, in education right now. And I know there are many days we leave not feeling good about, like, there's no solution to this right now. Um, and so then we just hope that they can hang on a little bit longer as we try to kind of tease out, are there some other options that we can consider? Is there something we're not thinking about, can we learn from another district? Um, what are other things that we could do to help them feel more supportive? And then obviously get back to what might the new normal be?
But there's positives that come out of it too. I had a pleasure going over, and, and John was really short-staffed with age, and group, but we helped at the middle school. I walked into the middle school, and I've been there before, and I tell you what, lunch at the middle school was just a pleasant thing to be, and it, it's not always been that way. Kids were interacting positively, there was half going into lunch, half coming out, uh, they were having a great time doing that, they were, they were doing the right things. Uh, and, and it was a great situation to be in, uh, and so there are great things. And I don't know that John, if you'll ever go back to a regular schedule after the schedule, uh, that you have now, I mean, it, it just seemed to be working so well.
You mentioned the classroom, being able to, to work together, that, that's really the thing we are lacking the most, is I can't, I can't put our desks together here and legitimately have a conversation, like, the mask is limiting, the distance is limiting. Kids love to work together, but when I'm sitting, you know, I'm having a talk to Darryl, the noise goes up, it's just, it compounds. And then the more you talk, the more this thing is. And then the more you talk, the more this thing is bothersome. And so, you know, then the kids slide it down and the teacher has to say, put your mask up. And it's just that dynamic is hard in the classroom.
Very insightful. Thank you. If I can tread it to some awkward territory here as far as the teachers and staff that we have. Um, now that OSHA has lifted the mandate or suspended it, um, do you think that might possibly create a a pool of fair people, teachers, staff to pull from? I mean, but how are we going to honor that? Are we going to recognize that at all? I mean?
We're, I think we need to wait for guidance from OD. Like, I don't think that gives us the, that doesn't open the gates for us immediately. It may, I'm kind of, I think I read that too. I'm like, oh, I hope this, I hope this starts to spread into
Right.
into the future and that we see the end of this, sort of some new protocols ending soon. Oh, sorry. That's something. What's not the best words?
Something's spreading. So Julie, here's, here's a small example. We, we have been tracking our, all of our contacts
Yes.
for every single COVID and, and we're not having any issues in the lunchroom, which is absolutely fabulous.
Right.
Et cetera. But we have, uh, people still call and we just got a person who called and said, I'm going to go to OSHA if this is being cared. So we're pushed from both ends. We want to, we want to, you know, some people want to get rid of it. Other people are saying, no, it's got to be.
I was just wondering how that was going to affect, like it's been suspended. So is, would that create a pool of more people to pull from for staffing? Okay. Let's advocate for that.
Good conversation. We, we done around this topic. Good, good discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, item five, curriculum review. We think that's around English, language arts. Who's got discussing that?
That is, uh, I was marking myself. You need my help with this?
No.
Oh, good job, good job.
Thanks Spencer.
He says we might even like the Dollar Tree readers. I actually have a link for you. I have reached my forty.
I knew it is a little small, but if you want to put it on one page though.
No, I, I appreciate one page over many. Do they make me break things for a Dollar Tree?
We thought we would come and, uh, give you this, an update. Um, this week, the Oregon Department of Education, uh, provided a webinar for us um, in terms of kind of giving us an update in terms of the criteria they use, the teams that worked last summer to identify the lists. Um, and then they broke apart the chart that you have. Um, they break it into four categories. They've got a K-two category, a three, five category, six, eight, and nine, twelve. And then they list the, the, um, companies, the programs that were submitted to them. And then they list whether they have met the criteria or have not met the criteria. And I will tell you that this is extremely rare, that we have like eight to ten choices in a category. I mean, there are times when we are lucky to have one or two good choices. So we, we are very pleased with that. In fact, one of the things that Bruce and I spent some time on was doing some color coding. Because we know we can't pilot ten programs. And so we did carefully look at those meets categories. And two major areas that were very important to us, they break them apart and Bruce can probably explain this a little bit better. The state breaks them apart in terms of there are particular categories that are non-negotiable. If they don't meet those, they don't meet at all. And those are, and they're legal requirements. And that is high quality text. Those, it's those first category, first columns there, um, it says like N-N-one, N-N-two. So they stand for high quality text, evidence-based discussion and writing, building knowledge and foundational skills. So if these, if the program does not meet those four minimums, they are marked what they does not meet. Um, and then there's some other areas that they, uh, weigh in and take a look at. And from those other areas, um, two major areas that we know our current programs are not meeting well would be, um, access to all standards for all students. So for example, our, our English language learners, we had to supplement with a separate program, an additional program to support our students learning English as well as accessibility and usability. So looking at students who may need, um, additional supports. Um, and also we noticed as we were, were, um, looking through the, um, feedback from the state team, in some cases, the usability was actually like usability teachers. Like it wasn't very friendly for teachers to use. So we honed in on those particular pieces as well. Um, so as we meet with teams, what we will say is if it is in the meets category, we would, we will gladly look at it. However, we would recommend that we take a look at the green ones first because they meet a hundred percent across the board in all those categories. So if we have to pare it down, let's pare it down to the ones that meet in all categories at a hundred percent. And then if we find those don't necessarily meet our specific needs um, at that particular level, let's say like middle school level, then we'll go ahead and branch out a little bit further. Uh, the next level, that, so the green ones meet at a hundred percent. The next ones, uh, that are in white color coding under the publisher column, they meet, um, all categories. But they may not be at a hundred percent in some of those categories, um, outside of the legal requirements. So for example, they may not meet in range and quality of texts. But what we did do is we made sure they were a hundred percent on the access to standards for all students and a hundred percent for accessibility and usability. Those were really two really important categories for us. Um, and then if they're peach colored, they actually, um, met perhaps in those two categories. But there was another area that may not necessarily be extremely high-end. But, so that would kind of be our first layer would be the green. Then we'd look more carefully if they did, if they didn't meet the needs that our teachers are concerned about. We would look at the white and then potentially we could look at the pink. So there's nothing off the table, but obviously we have to pare it down because we have limited time.
Except for the red ones.
Right, right. The red ones, um, just do not meet the, the criteria that we find is really important. Meet state criteria. Well, no, those don't. No, they don't meet the state criteria.
On the four essential requirements they have.
Right, right. Um, and so we, we pared that down and we'll be sharing that with our, I'll be meeting with the middle and high school English departments, including our special education team. We'll be joining those two teams. And, um, our instructional coaches will be helping support that and we'll also be working with our elementary teams. And then we did on the, I'll stop for a moment. We will share the link to this. So you will actually have access just to the hot links. Um, and then one of the other things that I think Bruce was sharing, he had heard from the last meeting is the ability to be able to share this out with the community. And so we'll be working on a page or a, a link within our district website and the school site where we can share this information and kind of keep, uh, communication going. Like here is the recording from the state uh, webinar that we had yesterday when that comes through. Here's the state webinar. Here are the standards. Here's the criteria, the link to the programs, which they can click right into and see the different options. Um, yeah, please do.
One of the things with this list that they had that came up, uh, yesterday really, it's not published on the OD side. You won't find it there. You have to request it from them because they have not signed contracts with the publisher. They said it's not confidential. It, it's, if you ask for it, you can have it, but it's not published out there. So we requested it and we're going to share it out. They didn't say you couldn't share it out, uh, but it may change a little bit as we move forward until they sign those contracts in there. They said it probably would not change it who meets and who does not meet in there, but the price list and some of those other things could change. But I think for us to start the process as early as we can is important. And we want to get started on that fairly quickly, you know, getting information out to, uh, district patrons, patrons and to the staff members. So we can begin to pick those two or three programs that we want to pilot at the elementary. Otherwise, we're going to run out of time. And we want to make sure that we give them all, uh, a good effort and good exposure so that we know we're getting the best program for our kids. It's going to be the most effective in the long run.
In, in terms of engaging the public in the past, in terms of whether it's a curriculum committee, how's it been done?
Typically in the past, when we've looked at, um, so the major adoptions around core content, uh, foreign language, social studies, health, um, math. Um, I'd say language arts, but it's been so long, but the Frankins, I shouldn't say language arts at this point. Um, has been that the materials, the list has come in, the materials have come. Teachers typically as a group have pared down what they're interested in looking at. They've dug deep and then typically we've advertised through, uh, announcements and newsletters. Uh, I would say it's typically about a three-week period. Um, and it's open, uh, for people if they would like to come in and take a look at the materials. That has been getting harder and harder in terms of coming in to look at like hard copies because more and more is online. Um, the E S D is going to be hosting the hard copies for us as a region. So they will be getting everything that meets on this list. And they hope to have that set up by January. So that would be another thing we put on our website is if there are, uh, district patrons, parents, family, community that would like to see that, we can help them schedule a time. And they can sit down and actually dig through the materials right there. Um, and so that's, and then what we would do, um, Jim, is we would ask for feedback. And so we have like, we ask, um, who they are, are they a parent? Are they staff member? Because sometimes we don't necessarily have staff that are on this team. So for example, if we have a staff member who wanted, who has a child in elementary school, who wanted to see the health curriculum that we're looking at recommending to the board, they would take a look at that and also give us feedback. So it can be a variety of people. Um, they give us their initial thoughts, any concerns or questions they may have. I try to give them a copy of the standards. They can also understand what's kind of driving those, the curricular choice. Um, and then we bring, when we bring the recommendation to the school board, we try to bring a summary of those, um, comments back to you so that you guys get a sense of like what, what is, um, what are our, uh, community people, uh, speaking of? Now I'll tell you the foreign language, we had little choice in terms of Spanish and, uh, French, but I think health, we actually had quite a few comments we brought back. Um, and some were concerned about the specific standards, which we could not address the standards, but we could address the, the curricular pieces. Um, and so that was one of the things we did, we did talk about is like where in this timeline and we did up, update the timeline for you. Um, where could we be communicating out, uh, on the website, uh, through announcements, through the newsletters, to try to keep folks abreast of other links, other, uh, documents that are coming about. And that would be for not only our community, but we will have teachers who want to be part of the pilot team, who are not going to be able to be part of the pilot team because we can't request unlimited amounts of materials. And so that they also will have and we'll put links there that might, they've got, might, uh, log into. I think there was one my bracket we were looking at today, Wonders. You can click right into the link and get into the program digitally and get a sense of what that program looks like. Look at the lists, look at the assessments, um, an example of those types of things. So I think trying to share that out as much as possible, um, will be a, a piece that we're wanting, um.
Every teacher will pilot, whatever we selected is the sort of to, to start with. They will, they will pilot all of any, if it's two, they're going to pilot both. If we just lay a three, they're going to pilot three of them.
The, the piloting team.
The piloting team will pilot all three. So again, oftentimes districts have done like they'll take three curriculums and then they'll have three different teams. And then those teams fight because they'll all like it better than our current curriculum. Like there's no doubt, all of these are better than what we currently have.
I wanted to say, I'll give it in short, Jim, the process preparing for the past has been come in and look at what we have at the very tail end for a week, a couple of weeks in there, it will be open and you look at it. And then they wrote comments. That was the process. That's what they've done in the past, pretty much across the board with all the curriculum. So we're trying and we heard loud and clear at the last meeting, we wanted to open it up sooner. So we'd like to get this list out, publish it on the website. And you should be able to, whoever wants to, uh, go into any of the publishers and see their preview materials online here from the links that will be in in this document that will be there. So they'll have that opportunity to do that, to review the curriculum. And then on top of that, be able to go to E S D and see what we have here as well, if whatever we can get. And we know that we've requested materials before and it's been tough to get them just to preview additional copies beyond what we piloted. But we will surely make sure that all of that's available. And what we're hoping to do is have teachers give us an update as they finish a pilot with some of the pluses and minuses of the curriculum and be able to post that as well.
And maybe perhaps even have them, when they're sharing out with their P L C, if there were someone willing to come and share like at a work session. Um, the other thing we thought about, uh, what might be helpful on the website is to do a Google form. So, you know, typically they'd come in and fill out the form, any initial thoughts, questions, concerns. If we had that Google form going and having Jason Moore help us with that, we could respond, uh, closer to real-time, um, questions and concerns early on. So perhaps maybe even as early as like January, as people are wanting to dig through this, we could be responding as we work through. Um, so we thought that might be an easier and, um, a more open process for people being able to give opinions sooner than rather than just that public window at the end.
That's great.
Maybe it is transparent.
Yeah. Appreciate that. That's a lot of work. Thank you.
And it's a work in progress.
Yeah.
See something we need to do where.
Very in-depth. It's impressive. Thank you.
So reading this time, this timeline, it looks like, so typically the public doesn't come in until the teachers have reviewed it. The teacher or the public reviews teacher comments and maybe some investigation. But you're, you're creating an option perhaps where the public's interested.
Starting in number four up here, pretty much on.
Okay, okay.
This entire list where they would typically, we wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had access to that. They will get to see everything in green. They will actually get to see if they want.
And they'll get to look at everything, not just the ones in gray. They can look at the ones in red if they want.
I don't know if we'll have, we want those.
No, I mean, that'd be, but, but they can, yes, you have.
Potentially, potentially.
They can pick the link here and preview the materials. I'm amazed at what's online, uh, when you go on and look at that. It'll give you sample lessons. It'll give you table of contents. It will give you, uh, the different articles that they're using and stories that they're using. You'll get a preview of the interactive software that they're using on there. It'll give you, you know, a, a sample of a teacher's edition. So you've got quite a bit there, uh, to look at and get an idea of what the curriculum is.
And some of it will be hard copies and some of it will be digital for their, their, uh, Chromebooks for their, their lessons.
Yes.
Okay.
And some of it will be like, if you mentioned accessibility is a big thing, we know that one of our, our key, uh, takeaways from our, our, our folks that work with kids that have disabilities is the ability to have that electronically accessible text that, that has the, the options to be integrated into our software that we have and use as well. But we'd like to see something that, that accommodates those needs as well.
This is going to look a lot different than the curriculum they've seen. There's a huge shift in number of years ago, the nonfiction text, specifically the elementary level. And they have, the text, we have not adopted since two thousand and eight. The standards have changed significantly since then. And so it's, and again, it's, it's one of the pieces around lagging performance in, in the district. Recognized by this team, recognized by our teachers, um, it's, it's long overdue to get this done because the curriculum is a piece that's holding, holding our teachers back from meeting pretty rigorous standards. The standards changed significantly. And these guys have been just the, the teachers and I know Bruce and John, and John both at the elementary level have seen our teachers have basically recreate curriculum to be in compliance with the current standards. It is a lot of work. They will be super rolled in on that so much.
And I think that's why our, our usability and accessibility is so key in there.
And then there's just lack of materials. Like we don't have a whole bunch of nonfiction. It's not something that's easy, necessarily easy to purchase. Um, and then have to create your own lessons and, um, it's, 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 it's problematic. This will, this will. This will, this will definitely help our performance down the road. Kind of leaves a workload across.
For sure.
It's a heavy load up front.
Is there more questions or input that you want to see from this around parent input? Kind of if we're heading down this pathway, is that aligned?
No, this was a great overview. I understand more better.
And we'll let you know once we, we get things together and on the, on the website so you guys are aware. And then we'll put it out in the high school, middle school announcements and then also in the elementary newsletter. So families and community are aware as well.
Close to other web pages for easy access to get to.
And I will guess we'll give an update sometime in this, in the winter, spring here before we get to the end. So that you kind of then, just like where we are with how are people feeling? Are we on track to meet this, the deadlines? And so we'll get a little update at some point.
So to summarize the piece or some of our, the standards have changed, have been updated, perhaps made more rigorous. And our curriculum that we're currently following doesn't meet that. And so it creates some add-on work.
That was 2008. I've done this long enough to know that when we did the curriculum change, again, the, basically the expectations at kindergarten, you pretty much needed to take first grade curriculum and move it into kindergarten. And that is what the.
Our curriculum is that big. It's 2008. I mean, and the standards have changed probably three times in that time period.
Yeah. And to be fair, we, when we did look at the curriculum that came out in 2013, we weren't overly thrilled. It was the first round with, with the Common Core standards. And we were not necessarily, they were very rigorous. And we weren't necessarily seeing the assessments. We're not looking like we necessarily anticipated them. Things were looking very different. And that's when we opted to go ahead and adjust and adopt math and weighed on language arts. And it just didn't really improve a lot until recently. So I think we may have done something different had we known all the work in terms of getting everything aligned. But at that very moment, when we looked at what was available, we didn't necessarily see any great options either. That was, that was, and we only gave elementary the option. We didn't even look at those options for middle or high school at that point.
Great, great discussion. Thank you Tiffany and Bruce. We've been at it for a little over an hour and 10 minutes. Is everyone okay with a 10 minute break and then we'll come back and finish up? Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, we're back live. It is 7:20. We will finish prior to 8:00. Uh, let's see, we are now on either six remediation slash study hall period update. And this was around, uh, high schoolers inhabiting the opportunity to make up work if you've missed a significant body of work. Gerald, it's you.
Yeah, thank you. And Christina, I'm sorry, I've got hard copies. I'll see if I, I will get a copy to you of basically the printed version of what I'm going to share. Remediation has an interesting history in our district. It's been well over 10 and maybe 12 years since our district had a great policy that, that was, we were, that was implemented, that we were going to be a proficiency based district. And in all of the trying to understand what does it mean to be proficiency based? At the high school, they implemented remediation and it went through a variety of models in, in implementation to try and get kids to engage in this, this mandatory daily walk to support where you went to either the teacher that you chose or the teacher that you were assigned to. There are various strategies for taking attendance or not taking attendance. But I think it's, so Jefferson said the powers of government are derived on the consent of the governed. And we found out through the course of time that the students were not consenting to be governed. So it became a running battle with administration. This is, this predates my coming to the high school where just so many of the kids were skipping. And we had a structure where even the best of our kids were basically incentivized to go hide out in the cars, run down to Dutch Brothers and grab a cup of, of coffee and, and our detention coffers were full. We had a really clean cafeteria during those days. We'd catch kids skipping for a period and, and try and coerce them into staying on campus by giving them detention. So we knew that the culture needed to shift of what remediation was. There was some work being done in 17, 18 to try and make a shift of, and actually eliminate remediation. And then some, some events transpired that year that kind of, kind of sidelined some of that work. But then it continued as we returned. We tried a few tools to incentivize it and we realized finally that, you know, this model is not meeting the Division 22 assurances for block hours. And so when we built our master schedule for 2021, we had remediation out of it and extended periods to provide for greater instruction for the students. And then with COVID, we didn't come back in person for 2021. So, so that conversation was tabled. Our master schedule for this year initially was going to have a period of credit assurance because of all the students that had failed during the previous year. Not remediation is going to be assigned because, I mean, overwhelming the majority of the kids had a class or so that they had to make up. And then we really had an amazing summer school program with over 300 credits given out. Our graduation coaches, I cannot say enough good about the, the great work that Marcia Munchon has done. And then Heather Skinner jumping right in with her, the number of kids that they have nursed through getting credit recovery. Jenny Frickett and other teachers at the school that have worked with students on credit recovery. It's, it's the most successful that we've seen it happen. And so we realized we didn't need that credit assurance period of the day. And so we realized that in August, we conferred with all of our, our subject area leads. And then we communicated with all teachers that, hey, here's the proposal to, to put the time back into the classrooms instead of having credit assurance. Only a few teachers responded, half of them said, yes, great. A couple weren't excited about it because some people really believe in that efficiency model that includes remediation as an opportunity for kids to retake tests, get additional instructions, which in theory is, is really good. But the general consensus, okay, we're going to extend the periods and no credit assurance and no remediation. Then we had 75 kids at one time that were on quarantine. We had a lot of students who started with some gaps from, from being gone. And we have students who just, you know, they, they have become accustomed to, they're not going to be satisfied with a C grade. They're going to retake tests. They want additional instruction. They know what subject they want to excel in. And so the demand grew to bring back some way to give additional support for students. This started in early October and it kind of, it started with one of our subject areas, it was math initially. And then it grew to other content areas and it grew to where the majority of the staff. So we'd like to see study hall back. We pulled them and it was 57% of the teachers. So we pulled all 52 certified staff at high school and 57% of those staff members said, yes, we needed to see us study hall. A little under, well, the specific numbers in here, but the majority of those that responded said they wanted to see it once or twice a week. So we, we have restarted study hall. The initial goal was that we were going to provide an opportunity for kids to have a choice. Because I really believe in agency, I want kids to be, to be able to ask some choices in their education and choose what class they go to for remediation. So we set up a Google poll. 409 kids responded and initially it looked like, yeah, they're picking some good academic classes. And then they all went in and changed and 300 and some of them decided they wanted to go to the library or other non-instructional space. So 30 of our 409 kids decided to go to the instructional location and others wanted to go someplace basically to socialize and play, which didn't meet our needs. So real quickly, Mrs. Seiko had a plan. She worked with some staff and put it together so that our P L C spelled out purple slips for the students that needed to come to them so they got a pass. And that the default would be that kids stayed in their fifth period class unless they get the purple pass from a, from a teacher. Kids can talk to teachers in advance to get the purple pass and make a request. Are the libraries screened students who are passing all their classes with high GPAs? That they can come to them. And I've got a group of students that's come to me in the cafeteria who teachers have identified as, well, they probably would not be real supportive of, study hall support. So we need to get them out of those fifth period classes. So I called my suspension team. They came and they met with me and we, we talked about suspension for a half hour, which might sound bad, but it's about lift kits, leaf springs, shock absorbers. A lot of these students are very knowledgeable. And so even though they wouldn't want to write a report about what their English teacher had for them, I've got kids from this group that came to me thinking they were opting out of English. They were like, yeah, I want to do a PowerPoint on my truck. I've got a student who wants to bring instruction to the next session so he can show it to a student. So they found something they're excited about. So that, that even ties into instruction also. So during this, this, we, we had three dates that were scheduled for us to be able to do study hall. We lost the 12th due to, you know, the closure. So we did it on the 16th. And I was observing one of our popular exit points, the, the trail that goes down the mall. Mr. Smith had the other one. We didn't observe a single kid leaving campus, which is pretty miraculous. And the response from the teachers has been really positive. There's a few tweaks that need to be done and it looks primarily like, you know, there are those kids that are in a fifth period class, the default class, who probably need to be in another assigned area. And so we'll look at expanding my, my, my group and find some other teachers who might be the right location for them. But, but what's interesting now, so there's an ongoing Google form poll of teachers to find out, okay, can we, can we add another date because we lost the 12th? Can we do another study hall date on the 29th? Because we're coming on the end of the term. And so we had one on the 30th, can we do 29th to 30th? So right now, as of, right before I came to this meeting, in that poll, it was 76% or excuse me, 69%, so almost 70% of the staff responding wanted to do that extra day. Now remember, it was 57% of the staff that wanted to bring back a study hall. Now, and even higher rate are saying, yeah, let's add another day. So I think we've made that or started to make that shift of culture in, in the teachers at least to support it. And the fact that kids weren't folding from campus indicates we're, we're at least started on a positive path. We've calculated some, some dates that we can do this on and put it out there and basically boost the model. The rundown of what we're proposing to teachers is that, because we've noticed that we have an increased need for study halls as the term goes on. The first month of the term, we're having study hall every other week. The first month of the term, we're having study hall every other week. The second month, we do it once a week. And then the third month of the term, cause each part term is about three months, we have the study hall twice a week. So we calculated, if we do that for the rest of the year, we lose about eighteen point six hours of our required clock hours, although there's some debate about whether or not.
Why would that not count?
Right. Okay. So that's the big question. Um, to, to meet clock hour requirements, they have to be in a place where there's, they're required to attend. Attendance is taken. Um, and the old model of remediation didn't meet that, but because basically the default is the fifth period, unless you have another assigned location, it might even fit within the clock hours.
How could it not? Just make it work. Just make it.
Can you, can you summarize just in the big picture, the difference between remediation and this? Like what's in the big, like in this simple, like the simple difference between remediation and this, what you're talking about just now?
Vocabulary word, right?
It's just. I like to pretend it's more than that, but that's the big point.
Okay.
It, it, you're right, because there was a culture around of remediation because it was, it was daily.
That was daily. This is definitely not daily.
And this is not daily, so it, and, and it gets progressively more as the term goes on when people are feeling the need. So, um, and they, they can actually go in and apply to get a pass, to go to a teacher instead of opening the door.
First couple of weeks.
Where you wanna go.
First couple of weeks of term, no one needs a study hall. Well, most people don't use.
Most people don't.
But they're, yeah, so, so there, those are the big differences. That was helpful to me because I, I kinda, we throw these terms out and, yeah, I, I you shared a lot. I just was trying to get clarity around how, what's the big difference.
And part of the, part of the change though is also the, the time of day. So we went from the morning between second and third period where all the kids were looking to wake up and wanna to run to their trucks, to right after, after lunch, fifth period, between fifth and sixth period. So they're.
How long was remediation compared to this?
Uh, remediation was about twenty minutes. This is thirty-one minutes.
That's more information than I had prior to this meeting, even for me. And I know I heard kind of the big picture, but this was, this was certainly.
And, and I'm happy to talk with any parent or board member about this content. I'm excited about, about the way it seems to be developing. Uh, we wanna be flexible. One of the conversations I have with teachers is, what if we get a large outbreak of students that are quarantined again? That impacts instruction the way that it did, um, late September and October. And we've got flexibility that, yeah, we can add some more dates if necessary.
That's really great. I actually had an opportunity to go to the Parent Town Hall meeting last night in Piscina, which was really insightful. Um, I think it's safe for the whole thing because it was also the football award tonight. So I missed quite a bit, but I think I can catch up with some members that were there that can get some more details. But, um, she had mentioned that the reason why, part of the reason why we, we took out remediation was contract receivance. So she said that's been addressed and, and taken care of for the mom's part. So I think if this, I think that was a great clever way to get around that as far as having a student assigned or apply for, so that they know where each child is in each classroom because they feel like they have to keep track of all of that for the tracing and whatever. But, um, that was part of the reason why remediation was kind of skirted around because there was no way, the way it was set up before was the student needed, this student needed English, this did need math, this one history, whatever. So they all just kind of scattered. And there was no way to keep track of that. So, um, this is a great way to get around that type of, because it's, it sounds like it's pretty, that, uh.
Well, Cinco will, it, will explain anything. I explain in a far more intelligent way. So you're right. It was a good one.
Yeah, yeah.
If a student needs to make up a test, does the purple slip get you to your science class to go take the test?
Yes, but, so there is a triage of priorities. So, so if there's a specific reason to go to science instead of another subject, you betcha. But if kids get multiple purple slips, um, so the teachers fill it out and they send those in actually before they go back to the kids. And, um, English is the highest priority because right now English is the biggest barrier to students being on track to graduate. So we look at the course of, so English, math, and then science and social studies and then other subjects.
So along with that, my concern was, I, I really thought that we needed to bring back some type of, because of how many students were quarantined and all of that and they're missing out on assignments and I was trying to help my kiddo with his assignments and I'm like, where's the lesson? And so it was hard to help him keep up with all of the assignments when he was not at school and he doesn't know how to get to the lesson to do the assignment and I couldn't figure it out. But so a lot of the math classes were kind of shut off. He couldn't access them anymore. And so I had a little bit of an issue because math is so foundational. If you don't have this, then you can't have this and then you can't have this. So if he missed all of this during the quarantine time and now they're all shut off, he can't have access to that? That's really, it's like, why shut them off now? I mean, who cares if they Google the answer? At least they try at this point. So I, I was wondering if there's a way for us to make a way for the teachers to just open up the assignments so the kids can go back, do their math assignments. The foundation lines, you know, because you have to start before you can get to the middle. You have to start at the beginning. Um, a, a lot of them were shut down. He can't access them. So is that a possibility for them to just reopen the assignment?
Yeah. So students frequently will, will talk to a teacher about a specific need that they, they have assigned.
So it's just, it has to be specifically that, that student. It has to go to that teacher and not just open it up for all of the students. It has to be per student asked.
Well, that's, that's the model we implemented because teachers need to be able to, to move on. So if you look at a teacher who, who has you know, a hundred and fifty kids a day coming into their class, they've got a set of, of work that they need to buy and grade for students. And then they move on. And they do allow for students to go in and redo work, but they need to kind of track, okay, who's going in there? Whose assignment do I need to recheck? So that I, cause, cause if they just opened it up, kids are going in and doing assignments, you know, how is teachers gonna keep track of what needs to be regraded? Um, it, it's, it becomes a little more challenging to try and manage that work when you also have another hundred and fifty assignments each day that are being added on to that that you have to go through and screen and make sure. So by, by having that contact with the teacher, if I'm going here, the teacher comes up, this student's going in, this student's getting some good work.
We are working at the tutoring center that would, I think, again, I think there's a possibility. I think this is a hurdle that we're gonna have to overcome around when we get past a certain time period, can you deal with a tutor getting credit and how we do that? Will be something that we'll have to overcome with our teaching staff around because again, they're trying, there's only so much work. They can only go back so far. I think it's, it's this additional workload. So will our tutoring center accommodate this will be kind of a question that we'll have.
But at the same time, I mean, what do you do with the kids who, yes, this is the model. This is what historically we've done. How do we equitably provide for the needs of the student who due to no fault of their own was sent home for, you know, two weeks for quarantine? It's gotta be, we've gotta find a way to use tutoring or additional study halls to help those students get that work.
Can we sort of take it from a backward approach and be like, okay, so instead of the child going to the teacher and say, hey, can you open up this lesson? The teacher opened up the lesson and then the child say, I turned in this lesson. And then they, instead of the, like, the teacher's giving the information for the student to access and, and it's up to the child to go to the teacher and say, okay, I turned it in now. Instead of saying, can you open it up? And then they open it up and then, okay, I turned it in. I mean, is that, does that make sense?
Um, it might be something we need to talk more about and, and maybe with some of the teachers that are, that are opening and closing their, their, their assignments. To talk about the mechanics of how Google Classroom used.
Right. See, and that's something I don't understand. So I don't know, I'm looking at a little more sympathetic towards the students who have, who are under, you know, they did or didn't get sick or they were or weren't quarantined to be denied the access of that and the inability. And it seems like a little bit of not enough accountability to do the lessons, but even they're like, oh, I wish I could, but I can't.
So I've never known a time when you haven't been available for, for anything you need for support. So maybe you can come in sometime in the next week or so, when we sit down, let's, let's try to actually walk through this process and find out. If you're with a teacher to find out, well, what's the way we can do this that would be good for all students?
Thank you. Sorry to take a.
All right. Thank you on that. Uh, next item, we have item seven, OSBA board training dates. And this is a follow-up to Spencer's agenda item requested was a board training, which was an excellent suggestion. Guys, if you wanna stay, you can stay. I think the other two items are kind of the board specific. Thank you for joining us. I know you guys are, have busy days, so. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you guys wanna hang out?
Board meeting?
Fun place I am.
Thank you. You're certainly welcome to stay.
Good night.
Thank you. I don't see them wanting, you just have to roll everything out. You gotta, you're messing up.
She's the last one.
She's gonna run out fast.
Wasn't Brennan, but I passed someone who was. Okay, uh, so Spencer, I think.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll just kinda, I'll say this kinda same thing I told you and, and I did, uh, I, I went back and watched the board meeting. I apologize for not being there, guys. I was, I was actually asleep when the board meeting happened because I was sick as a dog. I think I had that cold thing that's been going around or whatever. I don't know. I don't know what, what it was. Anyways, um, so, uh, we had, we had the training. Um, so Christina was there, Eric was there, Steve was there and I was there when we first came on board two years ago. Um, and we had, uh, is it Kristen or Kirsten Miles?
Kristen.
Kristen Miles, um, from, uh, from OSBA who's a board trainer, uh, come on out and, and she actually came here to train us as board members. And, and really what she did is, was really educational for me because I, when I first come on the board, um, you know, I've been on different boards and running a nonprofit. Um, you know, I know how board interacts, but at the same time, there's different laws public sector or private or, or nonprofit and things like that. So, um, it was, it was really good because she, uh, what she did is she went through the, uh, Oregon statutes, you know, which, which so by, by law we have to follow and everything else and going through our board policies as to what our board policies actually say and how we uh, how we interact, um, you know, with paid staff, uh, with students, with, you know, and where what, where we, where our efforts are best focused to make sure that change happens, you know, in, in, in ways and then ways where maybe we might spin our tires where we, we, not, not necessarily our place to do it, or there's a better, there's a different process or method. And so really for me personally, uh, it really helped me just to understand and kind of cut right to it, to what, what we need to do and, and can't do. Um, or if we can't do it in that way, which would, and so, um, I just think it'd be really good for all, for all of us to take that, to take that training. Honestly, for me to do it again, I'd love to take that training again. And, and be able to have Kristen.
Well, I even, I suggested Jim that we have, they have a bunch of different trainers that we actually bring someone you haven't seen.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that you're gonna all, you're all hearing kind of someone you haven't heard that'll present in a little bit different way.
Yeah, that'd be, actually that'd be great because then we'd fit us and maybe it's different just to.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I think for the board, you, you've kind of heard some and I don't know whether, roles and responsibilities, I think is the training that you're referring to.
Yeah, it's the one that I saw that it'd be the basic workshop and it was kind of what you talked about. It's a lot around, uh, best practices, roles, responsibilities and state statutes.
And, and the other, the other part of that too, the good thing was that she was able to share, um, with us and that idea was great. Yes, and maybe a little bit different I haven't seen before. Um, she was able to share with us, you know, pitfalls that other boards had fallen into, you know, essentially where, where, um, uh, just, just things that, you know, you're kind of hitting your head against the brick wall, but, but, um, and, and here's how, you know, so we don't corner ourselves and kind of now we gotta get out of this mess or whatever it might be. And so, um, anyways, I, I just, I think it'd be fantastic that would come down and, and, and train us and then help us to to, to fine tune what we're doing and how we can do it the best way possible. So.
They're usually looking for a complete session, like a work session. They usually ask us to set aside like three hours. So we usually are kind of trying to do this in two or two hours, but somewhere between two and three hours that they would have a set aside. Um, so like a six to nine o'clock or five thirty to eight thirty or something. Um, it's typically what they ask us to schedule and not schedule anything. No other, no other business with that. It's usually the requests that we get from them. Yeah. The dates we could look at, I think we kind of pulled a couple of potential options. I know that we're looking at some ideas.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open. Just, just looking ahead, we've got a board meeting on the ninth of December. And then I think, uh, you know, there's no work session in December, which I think is a great, great idea. I'm just curious to have it. And then we have a sixth January, uh, board meeting. And then the twentieth of January work session is what's scheduled for that would be the non-discrimination resolution. So is there, I'd open it up to the group. Is there any interest in doing it on a, a weeknight in late November or December? Or do you guys wanna move it out further or into two thousand and twenty-two? I'm wide open.
I'm, I'm, I'm more than happy to, um, for me personally, I think the sooner the better, just to kind of get it out of the way. That's, that's my thought.
I'm open for any time.
Okay.
Well, late November, we are waiting on another meeting from EST.
Yeah, we've got the EST thing.
Okay.
And then.
So.
Yeah, I would say into December. So.
Yeah, December.
Yeah, because since we're, I mean, we're already, we're already. Yeah. No, let's not, yeah, this month. And November or December, excuse me. I think December would be fine. Our board meeting is the ninth?
Then, well, you have, yeah, your board meeting on the ninth is our regular scheduled board meeting. That next week you could meet the thirteenth, which would be a Monday, the sixteenth is a Thursday. And those are, those are options to.
But the fourteenth and sixteenth are high school, uh, concerts, choir bands.
Yeah, so the sixteenth is one that we.
And the fourteenth and the Tuesday and Thursday were.
Two event nights.
Two, yeah. So we don't know who won or who flipped it.
Yeah. So is Monday, the thirteenth an option? Cause if we were, probably what we, we've talked about informally, uh, is giving them two dates. Or if we can high grade one, say, hey, the best date for us is the thirteenth, another option.
I'm, I'm open on the thirteenth.
I'm not open on the thirteenth. I wish we could push it to January if you guys don't mind. I mean, just because.
Probably. That's like, like you're.
We've got company meeting.
Oh.
Talking about when, when she can get.
Would you guys mind in the holidays or?
I would rather push it out to January simply because the holidays are, you know, and, and events for school. I mean, why rush it? I mean, we don't need to rush it, but.
That's fine.
The sooner the better.
Yeah, cause you're right. There's a lot of things going on next month.
That's true. That's true. I'm, I'm okay with you.
I mean, I'm flexible a little less.
So, you know, I was watching a, I think it was a Central Point training, OSB went over there and I think maybe I was watching something like that. And they were, um, they were, OSBA was really waiting to hear from the governor's office on a lot of stuff. So maybe we'll maybe by January we'll have some answer.
Yeah, it's possible.
Um, they, they were, you know, remember the governor was supposed to do a, um, like a monthly update and OSB, I guess, has been asking for that, especially regarding maps. In January, I hope they'll have a little bit more info for us.
So I think some dates in January, does the tenth or eleventh? That's a, is it Monday or Tuesday? One of those two days work for folks?
Yes.
Tenth is fine.
The tenth, tenth is fine for me. Uh, the, the eleventh would not work.
Tangerine. And then how about?
I've got, I'm pretty sure. But work group is in the morning. Or not, but earlier, like four, seven, four, six.
Yeah. Well, twelve January for everybody? So Wednesday?
That's fine for me.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would work for me, Jim.
I can make the twelve work. Yeah.
Twelve, Eric? Oh, twelve January. Got a bingo. There's nothing. I don't know what it is. That's far enough, I'm sorry. That's far enough out that OSBA can just make that work for somebody, you know?
I mean, whether it's in person or Zoom or something, you know, we could just, they could be tied up there.
And that's, that was another thing Spencer, I called Kristen Miles and she said, current, this was like three weeks ago prior to, I mean, she said she's not traveling and I think you, you, you mentioned that too, that she's a zoomer, zooming.
Yeah, when I, when I, yeah, when I, when I talked to her, that's what she said was, yeah.
Well, is she the only one not traveling? Cause I just saw that, I, I just saw that training.
Well, and that could have changed between the time when I talked to, cause, cause it was, it was well back.
She's got a young one. She's okay. That's.
Well, if we get a different trainer, I don't know who's on Central Point, but maybe we get that person.
I think there were two people actually.
So six o'clock? What time are you thinking?
Six to nine and what she said was it's two to three hours and it probably depends on how many questions perhaps, but three hours is killer.
I think ours was about, I think ours was like two and a half of the break.
That's, yeah, it's probably, that's more accurate.
Okay, six to nine?
I mean, that's a, it will kind of block six tonight. It should be done before then. We will, we will reach out to OSBA and kind of make sure, well, I'm sure I know who's available and confirm that ASAP. Okay.
And if they can, kind of person.
And if they can, kind of person, if that.
That's the preference.
Forable, if that's the preference.
That'd be mine.
So, yeah, and again, I'll, I'll suggest, we'll, we'll encourage for them to do that, and like we can go into a bigger space if we need to, like, you know, um, since it's a work session, it's library, there's different places you can have it, that are really larger spaces that everyone can spread out at their own table and.
The taco bar?
Yeah, any of those places, yeah, so we'll, we'll see if they, we'll encourage them to come and listen. Okay, tentatively plan for that, I mean, obviously things can change between now and then.
I like to talk about you.
I'm saying.
Good suggestion, okay, so we get on that. All right, item eight is kind of an open, uh, board agenda planning, is it just opening up to, to board any items, uh, you would like to see on upcoming board meetings for nine, nine December and the sixth of January?
I, I do have a question about that, I know. What's that?
I'm sorry, or longer.
Or longer, yeah, sure, yeah, whatever.
Um, so in our, in our board policy, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember what it says in our, in our policy, uh, how we get things on the agenda, is it? I don't, I don't know, Jim, if you've seen that or Kevin, if you have a thought of your head, how, is it just that we shoot you an email or?
That works great. If you want to email or call, that, that's good for me.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know that, I know that that's kind of, we've been knew that wasn't true.
I don't know, because our current kind of thing is like two, basically two board member, oh, it's like, oh, look at our policy, I have it in my mind, it's like if two board members request it to be on the agenda. So you requesting a gym and Jim goes, yep, great, that's two.
Yeah.
Um, if, if for some reason he's saying no, two other people I think could say, well, we want to talk about this and that could get on there. And then I'm, if the board policy says it's in like in cooperation with the superintendent and board chair, right? So it's one of those, like, you can let me know too, like, so in our conversation and I can bring it up. It's ultimately, there's things that we have to put on the agenda, so we're constantly kind of working together, just to raise an agenda that works for everybody.
So, yeah, we had met on Tuesday to talk, talk about that. So we've got some, some agenda items for the December and January.
Okay.
So, but if there's anything, uh, I'm just looking at what we, I'll just re, oh.
Well, let me, can I bring up one before, uh, just on, um, you know, we didn't, the board, the, the bond, it's one of those that there's an opportunity to go out for this continuation bond. And I'm kind of saying continuation, a no tax increase bond in May before the bond drops off. And that's kind of our one last, one last chance to do this, at least so you can talk about it with the public and tell them this will not increase your taxes. After that, it'll drop off and we certainly can go up for bonds in the, in the future, but you'll have to talk about it as an increase, that, as a tax increase.
Is it possible to have a meet and greet? I mean, do you guys ever do a meet and greet somewhere with the community? I mean, can, can you do that with the board in the fold?
Sure. Like just an open, like an open meeting kind of Q and A kind of forum, yes, and we can, you can schedule those kinds of, uh,
You got a good bond?
Well, whatever topic, if you want to just say, hey, come, it's like a listening session for the board, we just want, please come and it's open mic night and, you know, come in, we're gonna listen to you. You can, yes, you could do that.
Because I think I've heard in one of my, in one of my OSBA trainings, you know, those ones that they do an hour during lunch and such, that the meet and greets are, are, are a good way to kind of get your community involved in a subject. Okay.
Is there interest in the bond, like, so at the December, you really need to sort of, yeah, again, I, we're not making a decision, but, it, it, you know, we're, when I talk to the people that do this and help, or help school districts pass bonds, you really need, we just need all the, like, all marching in the same direction. And that's where this will be successful. If we're not interested in that, it, it's not worth really the time of, of anybody, it's not really worth spending additional money because it's going to cost us again to get some help. It's going to take effort, we, we, everyone needs to be involved, you know.
I, I think, I'm just going to interrupt right there, because I, I think at minimum we need to go for the continuation because I, I think, I think everybody has a chance to do this. Um, but we have things that are absolutely failing and it's going to cost us, it's going to cost us millions of dollars if we don't fix, you know, different boiler systems, HXs and, and roof, the roofs are already, you know, the gym, we, we've had the gym at the high school busted recently and have, have insurance playing there, the, the middle school, I mean, replacing all that, I mean, we just had, our, our, our schools in, in, in areas and aspects really need, 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 need help. So I think with that continuation, it doesn't increase taxes, you know, it, it, it's the same as where we are right now with people. And so I think at very minimum, we should do that. I, I personally would like to go back out for the, for the full one that we have, that's my, that's, that's where I'm at, but, um. But anyways, I think at very minimum, we, we owe it to the children, even being able to have a school.
If we don't do something, we're going to have outdoor school also.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's like, you get some schools in the area that just kind of let bonds go and then the schools fall apart and they went out to go get another one and so forth, and then, you know, it's like we've got an opportunity to keep our schools and, and our school in decent shape and keep it going and, and even make it better to some degree. Yeah, so.
Do we typically, does every community typically get an outside group to come in and, um, and do that or?
What do you mean outside group?
Well, like you had the right group last time, do it, so. I'm just thinking if we just did it ourselves, is that just not feasible?
It's feasible, those, those people get bonds passed. Like, that's why you, you're, we're trying to get twenty-five million dollar bond, you know, ultimately what this will be, it's a lot of money. If, to do it right, these, they'd get it done, like they tell you how to do it, do what you, they tell you what to do, do what they tell you to do. They have a history and a track record of having bonds passed. Do you absolutely have to have them? No. Um, you know, we were kind of in, working with them in relationship with them, obviously, prior to you guys coming in, and so, again, without, without the full bond board support, and again, I'm not, it, it, we are where we are, that just makes that challenging, and I think he didn't do some of the things that I think he wants, wanted to do, just because it's like, oh, this is, this is just, you know, we'll see, and we'll see how you guys can do and pass this. So he didn't do some of the things that we would want him to do or that he should work with a different part of the organization, the more, get out the vote, passing this is where he needs to spend some time and focus. I, as a superintendent, like after the hours at five o'clock, couldn't go do some things, which I didn't do under this circumstance because of, again, just sort of the, the climate right now was not to go do that. We need more of our staff, our teachers did not go out and knock on doors and make phone calls, and that's, if you want to pass this, that's what we say.
Um, and we need to have some of those meetings like you're talking about, where he can come and talk about, let's, let's, as a board, let's, let's help you understand what's going on and what we're trying to do and the reasons we're trying to do that.
Because I think a little bit more transparency, like if there's an amount with a needed project, rather than just a blank amount, because I think people are wondering for what's going to go to where and. I'm just thinking with all of the, all of the expertise we have in the district, if, you know, you think it's necessary to bring up. And I don't really know how much that costs with the mailings and postage and the firms and all of that, I mean, I have no idea, but.
Over the last two years, that we're probably approaching two hundred thousand dollars that we've spent on some aspects of bond development, bond planning.
Okay.
That it will, I can tell you, so Jeremy, as I talked to him, Jeremy Wright, my public affairs, has talked about continuing, if, if we want to continue the rest of this year, he's basically, I don't believe he will charge us anymore. Um, I think though, the idea would be, there needs to be money raised on the, on the, like a political action side of it, that would hire him. Um, to help do some things and get some guidance from him around, get out the vote, phone calling, because people need guidance around how to do that effectively, what's the messaging? And they're just really good and they do it all the time. So that's the, that, I don't, he's not going to charge the district to do some of the things that we're going to do, if we want to do a mailing, we can kind of talk about those kinds of things and spending any additional money. Um, but again, oftentimes that money is pretty well spent, if you can spend whatever X number of dollars, I don't know what that matter, magic is, to bring in a twenty-five million to the district to help, um, alleviate long-term needs, it's one of those things that investment means probably well worth it.
And then one more question, what about the four million dollar matching? Is there a deadline for that?
Yes, so that's why I say that December, you all, you have, you all have to make a decision, December fifth, we have to do something on December first with the state, which we're going to do, we can do, kind of based on, we kind of get a little bit of a, yes, move forward tonight. On December fifteenth is the awesome grant application, that is a very specific, at eight AM you submit. Again, we've been a very high rated district in that in terms of, um, of how we score, we will give, we will give the matching four million dollar grants as well.
So December fifteenth and our board meeting is on the ninth?
The board meeting is on the ninth, so we would, yeah, so at the ninth meeting, I think it's again, kind of coming with a little bit more information, a little bit of what exactly this, um, the amount, you kind of, we can get some additional information for you at that. Just so you kind of know, um, and a little bit more conversation about what would need to be included.
So we would need to make a yes or a no vote on that for the fifteenth, whether or not to go forward.
I think to move forward, there's a more official process that needs to happen because you don't have the language of, because we're going to have to rewrite what we did, the bond, that are all that stuff that you, you voted on before. Um, we'll have to come back again, it will be different, we'll be rewritten, um, and again, there's a timeline, that'll be January. It's going to be tight, like we have to approve it basically at that January sixth meeting, you're going to have to come, we're going to have to move pretty quickly, I think the January and February meetings, there'll be bond items that will have to be discussed. I think the February twentieth, I want to say somewhere around that time is the deadline to submit to the state or to the county.
What's December fifteenth?
December fifteenth is the application for the awesome grant, that can be more broad, that's the four million matching.
Yeah.
And that can be, they're not asking for as much specifics and the, and the actual bond language, the state, that, because that's going to the state. So we don't have to have every single detail worked out by then, we have a general idea of what would be included in the bond because we've done some work where.
So on the ninth, we would say whether or not we want to put out the application.
Of, of basically, uh, uh, you're basically given direction to me that says, yes, we are, we're going to be supportive of a bond. And then let's move forward and then we'll, we'll, the rest of this will roll out.
And that will happen on the ninth.
We need a decision on the ninth, I think, for us to, to waste any more time with this.
Jeremy be here on the ninth?
I probably can get Jeremy, someone there on the ninth to help.
Someone that kind of.
Yeah, either someone from our architect firm that did some of this work or, or Jeremy, so one of those two could come and help answer some questions and, um, like I said, we already have a, an estimate from Pepper, Pepper Sandler on a continuation bond at twenty years, at twenty-five years and thirty years, still get to see that. Um, so that's a group that could also talk, but they're also kind of like, you know, kind of some guidance.
So, let's say we go forward with this, we prove it, we get it out there and we get the bond, then is there a committee that oversees the spending of it and all that kind of stuff?
Yes. And again, there can be more emphasis of that, that's sort of a bigger concern around, you know, a community, a community, public oversight into the bond expenditures. And again, the big part of that is, do you, do you do what you said you were going to do? So that's kind of, um, and then they help make some decisions as things go over, like things cost more or less, do you add anything else on? You know, there's sort of that process that that group weighs in as well as the board.
And, and if I can speak, um, to the, to the point of, I agree with you, Mary, it'd be really nice to have this, it's just this itemized list, everything we're going to spend the money on. But the problem with that is, is just that with the cost changes and regulations, or just whatever has to happen, depending also when we go for that bond, how much money actually comes in. It's going to change so many different things, like I can say that with, with the cruise day bomb that happened, they've had to, because all of a sudden these lumber prices increased and everything else. Some of the things that they're doing has had, has had to change.
Because just. But we do have that, and so I'll have to get some guidance from them around what do you publicize, because I have, we, we created a bond for forty, forty-six point three million. There, there were projects like that, that exists, so it's, I don't know why, again, it's sort of like, what do you put out publicly? And they have some guidance around why you don't do that and why that gets you in trouble when you start to do it that way, but the committee has that. So we have the information and that, we can get more, again, that's a good question for some of them to ask about. We can do exactly what you're saying, there can be an itemized list with a cost, that exists.
Well, and, you know, stating that there, there are contingencies, obviously, there has to be.
We did, I think we get some advice from some others and I think they'll, they, I can hear, you need to have that question, I heard the same thing from Jim, we could, they can come in. They will do, they'll tell you why to do that, they'll tell you, here's some risk that comes with that, and then we can decide to do what we want to do.
And, and, sorry, I'm just, I know, I know, I was just, I just wanted to clarify that, that what I meant is, that's why we did do architectural plan before, just because it costs so much and that, and you don't want to get specific.
We're not going to spend money on.
Yeah, and you're not spending money on.
There's some detail that you want, let's rip open the wall so we know what's going to, like, what is it going to take to do the redo this? They don't do that, so they do these broad estimates and then, and they don't really do any architectural drawings and don't really dig into walls, they don't dig into, to find out what you're going to problem with. So they build in all these contingencies and all this extra money and different things because they don't, there's always unknown, but, but that should be very clear to all of you. And then again, the, the question of how much public do you make that? The numbers are insane, that's, I guess it's part of us, it is sticker shock when you start to see the, the cost to do a, those, the safety vest to be what we're talking about, let's make these front entries safer. And they will bring you, they will close to a price of like one point six million dollars, and you're thinking, oh my goodness, like what could I build for one point six million in North Bend? And you think, and, and they're, all they're going to do is redo the front end of this school, and it just is not, does not compute with what our own building of homes and building internally for schools.
It's part of it is the prevailing wage, because when you get someone working in a government, you have to pay them, but, uh, time and a half or double.
Uh, it's like, I don't.
Because whenever I did EST and we had the fire back in two thousand thirteen, those guys are like, oh, this is great, and you know, they're, they're getting paid double. And, and they're just like this, and I was like, what is this prevailing? And it was like, yeah, that's when we had that, you know, the softball field.
So that, so sometimes people get turned off, I think that's probably what you'll hear, Harvey, I'm just having some flashbacks of what they said, it's like, you'll turn some people off of this when they find out how much you're spending to do what, what they think they could do themselves for like pennies on the dollar, but we, we don't get to do it that way.
But I think a little bit more transparency, I mean, just where I'm coming from and, you know, if I was planning my own budget or something, I mean, the reality is everything has gone, gone up a lot, but.
I believe, I mean, this is my personal, it's like, if the three of you support this as well, I mean, the seven, the three specifically, I think, because you have a, you have a group of folks that are, are looking to your guidance and to your leadership in this community. If you're giving it a green light, again, the chances of this passing raise exponentially, there's just no question.
So let me, let me speak and be transparent, like, so, um, speaking as a board member, so, you know, I'm, I'm for no property taxes increases philosophically and, I did, you know, the rental prices in this town, if you know anyone looking for a rental, it's unbelievable, the escalation, so. Any of that, it goes to the property taxpayers and then it gets passed on to the renters, so I philosophically am opposed to that, so. My preference, it's a pipe dream, I say sustainably harvest the Elliott State Forest and that, that funding should go to the timber counties around here. That's a long-term thing. Secondly, I would say there's a lot of money coming from the federal government for infrastructure, I don't know what's going to be passed or, you know, I would say second, go after the grant. Third, I'll support a bond, a continuation bond for no tax increase. Um, but what does have to be in there, and I, uh, and I have a, a, a friend, everyone would know him in the community. He looked at this and he said, his observation was, there's just not enough detail in the cost piece of units and line checks. So what we have to do in my mind is look through that long-term facility plan, high grade with those projects, what's, you know, what must be done in a, in a priority list? And then we've got to get, uh, scoping costs or budgetary costs for those items and, you know, I don't know, Tom Gieske, I don't know him, but I know we've done business with, find someone who can give us a budgetary cost estimate, or call it a scoping, you know, when I've worked in, scoping was the broadest, you were plus or minus fifty percent, budgetary, you know a little more, you're plus or minus thirty, that type of thing. So whatever term we want to go to and say, that's what this, that's what the level of detail is on these estimates, and you say, here's the numbers, they're effective February twenty twenty-one, this is the best we know, based on these numbers, we're going to do this, and just that's the transparency, level of detail. But I think folks respond to, and yeah, there's always going to be, say, hey, I can do this, me and my brother could do that for you, or, you know. And, but anyway, that, that, that's my.
I will get you information and some people to get some guidance to us. Because that is, it's an area that, again, it's like, you know, I'm working through some bonds, but there's some elements of this, but it's, I, I don't, I'm not quite, not.
And, and going around, touring the facilities, the port, so, yeah.
It's obvious, when you go into a boyar room for praying out loud. Goodness.
Yeah, that was good, that was great, touring that, touring the force.
Julie, if you want, any comment on this?
Do see that all over my face, um, there. It's just a little bit of, like, what was the, what's the lowest one, like there was three, there was forty-eight point three, there was thirty-four and there was.
That's this, so what we're talking about is doing the lowest, which is no tax increase.
How much is that?
It's twenty, uh, I think it's, I just got the update the other day, it's, I think it's twenty-three point six million.
So what if, just, just what if Wonderland, what if we put it out for twenty-three million minus four, so whatever that number is, seventeen, no, eight, eighteen, nineteen, whatever, anyway. And then we have the matching four million to make up that difference, so the grant makes up the difference of the taxpayer, because it just, I mean, we, we passed a twenty-three. So the grant makes up the difference of the taxpayer because it's just, I mean, we, we pass a twenty-three. We get the four, we essentially get twenty-seven, which is a really good number, but let's. I don't know, it's just la la land, just putting it out there.
Well, it's just one of those things, we, we started with, I mean, again, the, the, the bond development committee starts with a hundred and twenty million dollars in what they want. And then we're kind of like pair, pair, pair down and to get to something that actually might pass. It's, anything what you're saying is we can do a twenty million dollar bond and, and again, it would be, you could advertise it that we think this will be a, a sixteen cent decrease in your taxes. Like, that's what you'll be able to share. So that's certainly probably more attractive than even, this does not increase your taxes. I'm gonna get, again, most districts usually want as much money as you can get. Like, that's just.
And anything you do.
Cause the means are more than what we can do.
If you say you're gonna spend this much money on that wall, you just automatically have to take thirty percent and just add that, you just have to. So I get it.
They do build the cost, right? The, the, what we've done before is multiple cost escalations of like, one, it's like, you're not gonna pass this, you're gonna pass the bond, you're not actually gonna do these projects for a year or two. So they tack on increases, they tack on estimated increases. Um, but yes, there's, and then yes, you can, you have multiple options in this around tax increase. The tax, you know, neutral, this will not increase. I think you're gonna hear from passing this, if you just go by, can you pass this or not pass this? That is highly, highly.
Are we working with an architecture firm yet at all? I mean, I.
We did previously to get to this point.
So the thing is, is this is just a basic room. This is just totally functional, basic room. So what I'm worried about is the finishing touches that are just gonna go way over the top. Like, we can have a basic function room or we can have all glass, you know, everything's sparkly and shiny and glass and. Like, that would not be a necessary feature. And like, let's.
So, so I think we, we're here, I think what we'll have to do is, there's these items on this uh facility plan, we're gonna say, okay. You're replacing the boiler, uh, this is the scope of that. And that's probably an easy one, but when you're talking about a room that you're gonna kid out. You're gonna have to say, it's, you're going with an economy class, it's gonna include some computers, you're not gonna have. A view of the bay and all the glass. So you've gotta define, put some scope in there and that's what the scope of that is. So that's part of this budgetary cost estimate. It's for this scope of this room or whatever, whatever the improvement is.
Yeah, I drove by and saw, you know, there was a football game at Marshfield and their brand new building that they put where the Harding Building is, and I'm like. That looks cool, probably a little over the top, you know, I mean, you have total space A G on it and get all technical. It, it's just, I don't know, it was like some architecture firm was like, let's do all this. And you know, they just wanna show off their skill, which is fine, but not for school.
There's a middle, there's a whole process to get to this and, and again, community input around. Cause they can do different versions of, here's what we're gonna do, and here's an expensive version, here's a not so expensive version, and here's your cheapie. Do this, and, and then they'll tell you the downfalls of, of each of that, like round, cause some of the cheapie like, well, this is expand a scope, like, there's different things that you'll hear from them. Um, who do this for a living. And it's diff, and again, so I think that's, that's part of this process. You typically, again, I'm, we typically don't spend the kind of money to get the kind of detail you're doing. Without, cause it's gonna, they're, they're not coming in for free. And what we're talking about doing is substantial work for them. It will be expensive, cause it's like, instead of going out and doing projects where they're actually gonna get the work, they don't know if we're gonna actually do this. So their investment, they're gonna cha, charge you a premium dollar to get that answer with, because the idea is they're not getting the work.
And that, and that's a, it's a great point, Kevin, and it's probably worth spending a little money. And if, and if we have a good relationship with Tom Gieske, I don't know. Who we, you know, I, I.
We're, we may, depending on, we'll have to find out what we think it will cost and we have to put out a bid, we can't really, we can't really select anyone to do this work.
Okay.
So we have to actually kind of go through a process, de, depending on how much money it's gonna be. And again, I don't, I, we have architects that will give us a general gist of this. Um, locally as well as we've used our regional architects to do this all the time, so they'll give us some guidance on this. And come get you guidance, so you need to hear from them and then we can kind of decide, uh, but we gotta do this pre, like, the timeline of this is gonna be pretty fast.
So, so to, this should be an agenda item for the ninth of December that.
I think the ninth needs to be like, yes, you're gonna get on board, seven oh, and we move forward and then.
You're definitely going to apply for the four million then because, I mean, that doesn't really make a commitment, but you've got your application in for the.
Yeah, we'll definitely would move forward with that. And then we need a committee to kind of come back and review this again and put some numbers real, pretty fast. Like this has, again, I, we have to submit something again by mid-February, so you're gonna actually have to take a vote, like, so we'll need the board to have the information. Pretty rapidly here, it's gonna come fast. So, general gist, I know you're not voting tonight, so I'm guessing we're like, yes, we'll move this on the agenda and move, and again, kind of hearing.
So, so we're saying we're gonna move it on the agenda, but are we saying whether we're going for just the, we're, cause do you need for your application to know how much we're going for?
Well, no, and in that one, yeah, we will. I can put that together at the last minute.
Can we just say, yes or no, apply for the four million? And that just be the, the agenda item vote? Or do we have to specifically say, we're gonna move forward with a certain amount bond number? Cause I would be more comfortable with making a vote on whether or not you apply for the four million dollar. And then we can go through another work session to decide what amount we would put out. Is that a procedure that would have?
I will have to go look at that, cause I know they want to know, if I recall this, like, we have to give them a list of projects that we are gonna do with our bond line. Um, and it's, they're fairly, it's those broader categories, it's not, it's not that detailed, so I think we probably can work to figure that out, I think. Um, I'll have to do, I'll have to go do a little bit of research on that, but, so I can come back on the ninth around, here's what you need to do and why, and whether that needs to be in a number or not. Um, cause you could come back with a committee, um, pull together as many kind of committee members or previous committee, as well as invite additional people. Again, I don't know, as many people that we can get to weigh in on what, what direction.
Application process?
I don't think we're gonna have time to do any of that. It is gonna be, so we're gonna open up this and as many people that wanna come and weigh in on this and do some. Where there's some people can listen to the conversation, invite some people at the table, I don't know.
So this, so this entire bond process was happening before, before I got elected. And so everything we're talking about doing, we, we gotta be careful not to reinvent the wheel because that was, that's been happening for longer than two years. That's been happening over, over the course of.
Right.
Four or five years and, and if, and if we're talking about trying to reinvent the wheel in the course of two months.
Right.
So this is not yet.
Which that makes sense.
So, so Kevin, the target date for this was, is this a fifteenth of May or, or is that?
For the bond?
Yeah, or is that another?
No, that's, the election would be again, some May election, I don't know whether it's actually.
Yeah, somewhere in March.
Oh, is it? No, no, the May election.
Well, to get it on the ballot.
No, it's February twentieth or something.
Is it okay?
And so, so by that time, we need to know, I mean, by February essentially, we need to be saying, hey, public, here's what we're doing.
I have to submit, that deadline is to submit to the county clerk, the exact language of our, and then that usually takes a little bit of back and forth. Cause they don't like what we say. So.
Okay, and I, I should say the, the last language was extremely confusing to a lot of people, so let, I, I think if, let's, let's get that.
Yeah.
Really be very transparent.
So again, I wanna kind of get, we definitely need to get this moving pretty quickly. Um, even in December of getting a group together to talk about what's gonna be in this bond. Cause again, I think you can look at what we thought we were gonna put on this. I think that that's up for some change based on. Um, based on some previous data, I don't think we wanna, I don't know if we have time to do what you're asking for, but there is some of that that exists.
Yeah, um, well, I think if we, you know, once we settle on the amount, and Spencer, to your point, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to. There's, there's a, a pretty big body of existing work we can use, I think we can use, unless that violates some.
We need to get some people back to you to talk to, like, that have done some of the work and they will, and again, we'll, we could pay them to come in and talk to you. Um, that did some cost estimating and explain to you what they did, how they did it.
I don't know if we even need to do all of that, cause it's already been taken care of. So like, let's not redo something we've already done. And I think the community is now very educated as far as what's out there and what's available, what. And if we just go ahead and just let them decide for themselves and put it on a May ballot and they can vote it down or vote it on, who cares? I mean, it's their choice at that time.
Right.
Whether it goes to the ballot, so.
I think this is one that we just saw Kokil, so here's just a lesson learned. Kokil last May lost their election by like twenty votes. And it was about a, I don't know, I wanna say it's like a twenty cent increase, thirty cent increase that they were doing back then. They changed that, they put it on this November, zero increase, and it failed by one thousand something votes. So if you just roll the ball out there, it's not gonna, it, it most likely not gonna pass.
And we also gotta have buy.
When we did our polling, when we did a continuation, no tax increase, and that, and people heard that message and they heard what we were gonna do. We had a seventy percent supportive level in North Bend on that poll.
So why don't we just use that information?
Yes.
Just put it out there and let them decide.
Well, we just need to do the work to do, to get the messaging. So that's, I agree, absolutely, let them decide, but that, it will need, it'll, we have to actually. Go knock on doors and tell people why this is important. I think that's what I learned on the Kokil is, cause they didn't really do any of that.
As long as it's completely transparent as far as how much it will be on your taxes, like. You know, every, our taxes increase three percent every year, so we have to take that into consideration along with. It, I mean, you, yeah, it's at this level and it just.
Yeah, and I think this is one that's like, again, this is a pretty clear, cause we just did the tax, they just came out, so they were able to give us, you're at eighty-eight cents is what you just paid. So that's the estimate going out the rest of this and here's what you could expect to get in the bond.
Who knows what the interest rate is, the recalculation, blah, blah, blah.
Things will change.
Go up, it could go down.
I will tell you the way they usually typically do this, it doesn't go up, like, but it could, but they are pretty conservative around how they do their calculations. Cause they need to keep you.
As long as that's transparent.
Well, I'll tell you why, they don't get paid until we pass the bond.
I get it.
Yeah, Pepper Sandler wants us to pass this. So when they're wrong and the message gets out is, don't use them because they're wrong, they don't wanna be wrong. So that, that would kill those or organizations, so it's in their best interest to be, that it turns out better than what they tell you it's gonna turn out. So usually there, it's more conservative, one, it's like, it'll be less and you'll get more money. Like, it'll, so they're gonna estimate how much money the bond's gonna sell for, very conservative. You'll usually get more. So you can do a few more projects that you didn't think you could do, or you can have some money to set aside to, to make sure that when costs escalate, you can actually get them.
So Jim, if I can throw something real quick, um, I would like to see on the, on the agenda for this next time, getting back to your original. No, it's, um, uh, to get it on the, on the, uh, to get on the agenda, to have, maybe have, what was that gal's name who came up and presented? Because she, she did present on the different options of, you know, different levels.
That was super rich.
Um, and, and then they can, they, they can then present on those levels and then at, at that point, we can then say, you know, because we're gonna need to, to say, yes. Let's go for this bond amount here, you know.
So you wanna get, get vote on that on the ninth?
Cause we're, we're, well, because we need to for them to be able to submit.
Now, I'll find out what you need.
You know, you know, yeah, so, so, cause if we have to do, cause if they have to do an amount of what we're going for, to be able to do for the four million, then we need to, we need to have that vote on.
Okay, so it might be a couple of, you know, it might be a vote that, that, and I'm just.
Yeah.
Carrying that forward, it might be, here's a vote for forty-eight million.
Yep.
Whatever that is.
Do a vote.
And then there's a vote for, I'd say, you know, then there's the votes of the continuation.
With, I, I just, I, again, Spencer, you probably, I mean, again, I'm not, I don't, they don't, they don't have to tell us how they're voting, but I think we already know the answer to what. Again, I want a seven oh vote on this, not pass this at four three, cause I don't think it will pass, we're not gonna pass any bond if this board is not seven zero. And again, I don't wanna predict what the vote is gonna be, but we, you already heard Jim to just tell you, if it's not a, if it's not a, in, no, next, zero increase. He won't support it. So I don't wanna waste a bunch of time. It's not worth my time or any of yours or this community's time to go out and try to do something that we don't have. Like, this group a hundred percent support. It's already a lot of work to go get this.
And, and, and Kevin, you're absolutely right. I agree with you a hundred percent, because honestly, if, if, uh, if, if, I mean, just total transparent. I mean, if, if you guys are, are just gonna, gonna go for one where it doesn't increase taxes, you know, then, I mean, then, then that's obviously.
That's what we're talking about.
Then that's what I'm gonna go for as well, because that's, I mean, I, I wanna get as much as you can for our kids and everything else. I mean, obviously, I, I love the.
And I think that's where maybe we're on the same page.
I wish we just had an annual supply, but you know, with COVID and layoffs and everything else, I mean, there are just, you know, so many variables right now. I think if people already have something on their taxes and they're used to it, um.
It's not a change for us, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. And this is a responsible thing to do.
And then as a board, as a board, a hundred percent, we can all be behind it, we can just march forward, we can knock doors, we can say, guys, come on, let's do this.
You can always look at the other options, like, you know, you're saying.
All the, the grant. That is a possibility, if, we will continue to explore those, cause that's, you know, at the end of the day, we can, you know, do some other things with, again, with our resources. Or change kind of how we're gonna do a bond sale.
And that can be a selling point to the community too, saying, we're gonna try to look out for other opp, opportunities as well.
I just can't promise that we're gonna, that we're gonna have access to any of that.
Right, I mean, you can't promise success, but you can promise that you'll try.
Yeah.
And you know, when we do ceilings, we'll try to pull in some lighting retrofits from whoever, you know, has lighting. Like, uh, some lighting company and see if there's some kind of a bond or some sort of a.
Rebates for that, energy rebates, energy, energy taxed up.
Yeah, or grants out there for stuff like that. Energy trust, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if they work with schools, but.
They do.
So it, those are just options. When it comes to buying windows, buy auto windows. And find a storage building so we can get the discount, but we can put them away somewhere until we actually need them.
Those are, we end up with a bond at this size, there's other rules around hiring folks to manage this.
Too much control.
There's a lot of stuff that, there's a lot of hooch you gotta jump through when you're talking about government money and, and, and tax place and being responsible for it. Um, but that, again, that's a learning that we all do kind of through this process and we'll have a chance to talk to them about those kinds of things. Um, there are ways, there's a, there's ways to save money when you build building. You can do kind of prefab stuff. And they'll tell you again, the pros and cons of some of those kinds of options. We're not doing, this bond doesn't include a bunch of new construction, so it's. Again, and all that other stuff is expensive when you're tearing down old to build new, it's, it's also costly, so. So we don't have the prefab stuff. I didn't really, that went off the rails of your agenda items.
No, it was fine. It's, it's, it's eight twenty-five. Are we, are we, anything else?
I'm gonna just email it to you, so we don't have to do this.
Your agenda item, your suggestions. Well, and again, we can set some, set, time aside in other board minutes, and then, and then just to have that conversation about, are there board agenda items that you'd like?
Yeah, and I just wanted to open up, cause I thought we'd have some time to be in.
Yeah, I get, I.
Silly you. I sucked her away.
Then, then you email.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and maybe.
Great, great.
Thank you for taking the time to, uh, we went twenty-five minutes over, thank you.
It's gonna cost me coffee.